Hi.
Testing.
Twenty-second, next week, next Wednesday.
First time in three years it's not a council meeting.
Annabelle, we ready? The City of Riverbank City Council and the local redevelopment authority meetings are now in session. Today is April 14th, the day before the most celebrated holiday in the nation. And it is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight. We come to you, Heavenly Father, presenting praise to you. Knowing, Heavenly Father Jesus, that there's many decisions that has to be made by this board, by this body, by this city council. And we just ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you give them the wisdom and the understanding, the leadership that they need, Heavenly Father. We know that this is a great nation, Heavenly Father. But Heavenly Father Jesus, we know that you put leaders in high places. And we just ask tonight that you just bestow wisdom upon each and every one. Let this be a meeting of the minds, Heavenly Father Jesus. Let each individual item that's in front of them tonight, Heavenly Father, just come together with peace and understanding. Let each one that has a presentation to make here tonight, that it just goes smoothly and is understood by all. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you be with the council, the staff, the city, and the great citizens in this great city of Riverbank. We ask that you be with this great nation. And Heavenly Father Jesus, please bless her once again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call.
Mayor members of the city council, I just want to announce that our Channel 2, government channel, is down right now. It's temporarily off the air. So that means that we will not be televised on that channel.
Thank you.
Council authority member Janine Tucker?
Here.
Council authority member Leanne Jones Cruz?
Here.
Council authority member Cal Campbell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
Conflicts of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
I have a conflict on item 5.1.
It's a potential financial conflict based on her business location.
Okay, thank you. Noted. Item 1, presentation, starting with item 1.1, Presentation and Proclamation for National Library Week. Want to join me? Long time no see.
Always good to see you.
Thank you. All right, the City of Riverbank proclamation, whereas reading and literacy are cornerstones of a free and democratic society, and whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. And whereas literacy is key to achieving personal success in schools, in business, and in life. Whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative programs and through the power of reading. And whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals providing technology training and access to technologies. And whereas libraries offer 24/7 access to library services through online resources such as eBooks, e-magazines, downloadable audiobooks, musics, and movies, online language instructions, and research databases. And whereas libraries partner with parents and caregivers to empower children with knowledge and skills necessary for successful participation in school. And whereas libraries continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas librarians are actively building partnerships in the community in reaching out to parents, children, and low-literate adults. And whereas libraries provide free resources such as employment researchers, searches, tests, preparation materials, and computer training classes. Whereas all libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters in Stanislaus County are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the City of Riverbank does unanimously proclaim April 12th through the 18th, 2015, as National Library Week in the City of Riverbank. And all residents and visitors to visit the Riverbank Library to take advantage of the wonderful resources available provided through the voter-approved 1/8 sales tax dedicated to support the library. And signed today by myself, and that 1/4 cent is very important.
1/8 cents.
1/8 cents. Boy, I was going to double your salary. There you go. And if you will, make a couple of comments. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all for the support of the library. I want to especially thank Mayor O'Brien for coming to the library and reading to the preschoolers. And I want to thank Darlene Barbara Martinez for all her efforts the last couple of months, giving VITA Tax Volunteer Tax Preparation at the library. We couldn't do it without you. And if you want to know a couple of things that are coming up.
Sure.
Every Thursday, we're doing a Crazy Eights Math Club at 3:00, and it's geared for kindergartens through second grade. So we're doing that until May 21st. So every Thursday, we're having fun with math. There's a couponing workshop for adults, April 25th at 2:00. It's a Saturday. The Modesto Money Mavens is putting it on. And then we have a book club on the 28th at 4:00 PM. We're going to read or discuss "If He Hollers, Let Him Go" by Chester B. Himes. And then, of course, the Mayor Book Club is in May, May 4th, the first Monday of the month at 11:00 after my storytime. And then we're making flower cards for mom. So that's May 6th, so the kids could come and make their Mother's Day cards for their parents. So anyway, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Presentation and Update of the City's New Website and Design.
Mayor members of the city council, as you know, the city has been embarking on a complete redesign of its website. This is something that has been long overdue. Alvaro Zamora is the head of that project on my team. And he has been working with a working group of representatives from across the city organization to provide an update of our site and to improve the content. Tonight, we have a sneak peek for you of the preliminary design. This is still a work in progress, but it gives you an idea of sort of where we're going. We'd also welcome your feedback on the design. And if you could, if you have comments either this evening or over the course of the next week, you can provide those to myself, Alvaro. And we can incorporate those as we continue to work with the consulting firm. So this was a large undertaking, and we are looking forward to getting your initial response to our preliminary design. And Maricela Garcia and Alvaro will be providing that overview.
Thank you, Jill.
Al, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. And like Jill said, you know, tonight, we're going to show you a sneak peek of what our new website could look like. You asked for it back in your 2013 strategic planning session. That was one of the objectives, to improve professionalism and customer service. And one of the goals was to enhance our website. And with that, you know, in November, Maricela, yeah, we awarded the contract to Civic Plus. And since then, the city's website team along with the Civic Plus project team, we have been working hard. I mean, we've been reviewing other cities' websites, see what they use, their layout, their design, their photos, I mean, you name it, their options. And from there, we've gathered all the information, sat down, talked to the team, what we liked, what we didn't like. We talked to the Civic Plus's project team, and we gave them, you know, what we liked and what we didn't like. With that said, Maricela, do you want to show our website? Probably the first thing you'll notice, we changed the font from Times New Roman to Arial. No, just kidding, this is not our website. I mean, it is our current website, but I just wanted to point out what our current website looks like. Now, Maricela, if you would be so kind. Ta-da, that's our new website. As you, do you want to go back to our old website, Maricela, real quick? As you can see, it's very difficult to navigate. I mean, let's look, for example, let's get our agenda for tonight. Step 1. Step 2. You've got to scroll down.
Would take forever to download.
Step 4. Step 5. Well, you get the point. Now, jump to our new website. Scroll down a little bit. Agendas and minutes right there on top. Step 1. Well, if it'll open. Don't let me down now.
Our current one doesn't open at all, so take it away from it.
So as you can see, it's very nicely organized, not just city council, but if you go further down, well, it's step 2 right there, the today's council agenda.
There's a variety of methods by which it can be downloaded, other than the [inaudible].
And if you scroll further down, it's the Budget Advisors. All the agendas will be located in one central page. Like, you know, not in the old page, you'll have to go to page to locate whatever you find. Okay, go back to our homepage. Go to those icons, please, in the middle, scroll down. As you can see, one of these things, these we like. The website committee, when we first found out about these, you know, like notify me. That's going to be awesome. If you're a resident, if you just want to be notified when a new agenda comes out, you know, you sign up, enter, it's quick, you sign up, enter a username and your password, and then you'll be notified whenever a new agenda is created. Or if you're interested in recreational programs or classes, you can sign up and you'll get the, you'll be notified either by email or text. And let's see, another one, it's the report of concern. Unfortunately, Mr. Neal's not here, but he would have loved that. Customers, residents can go and click in there. If you report, if you see a pothole, a street light out, anything, you can just sign up again with the same username and report the concern. And the good thing about this one, it'll go directly, for example, there's a pothole, it'll go directly to Michael's department. If it's to do with, I don't know, water usage, it'll go directly to our code enforcement officer. And if it's a sidewalk issue, again, it'll go to Michael or something related to admin, it'll go to those specific departments. Online payment, we have that, but you know, that's something that I think Sue is going to take advantage of too, paying online. Let's see, scroll to the bottom. Oh, you know what, let's do a how-do. If you're new to our website or to the City of Riverbank, you know, you want to know, how do I do what? We can add stuff here. How do I build a building plant? How do I do, build a shed? You go there, open your building plants. And we can, like Jill said, this is, you know, a work in progress. So we're going to continue adding more information on that. We're going to be changing, you know, the titles or whatnot, but let's see, what else? Scroll down. And I don't know if you noticed, but the slideshow on top, it says a slideshow, and it'll be, it'll rotate. Who's opened our current website on their cellphone? Anybody? Is it fun?
I don't do it anymore.
This one, this website is what they call the responsive website. So as you can see, that's probably how it'll look if you open it on your phonebook, iPhone, or Android. As you can see, it's very easy to navigate on your phone, any type of, if it's an iPad, it'll adjust, the screen will adjust to that particular mobile device you're watching it or opening your website. Am I missing else? Anything?
I love the photos.
Just the options that we'll have to highlight news. Our calendar will be accessible for any items that are coming up, including meetings, recreational items, community events that will be occurring.
Street closures or anything like that?
Right there, yes. Scroll a little bit to the top right there, traffic alerts.
But that's, right, but let's say they're doing a slurry seal on Roselle. Are we going to be notified of that?
Yes. And also that notify me, I'm sorry, Maricela, notify me. Residents can sign up for it. If there's going to be a street closure, they can be notified. Okay, you know what, there's going to be streets closure. So we're going to have all the bells and whistles on this website.
I'll question, sometimes in the summer, when it gets really hot, and we need to notify the public that we have cooling centers, what section would that be in?
Probably there, yeah, on top.
For those type of emergency alerts, right across the top, we'll be able to put a flashing red light that says alert.
Oh, very good.
It will relay the message that we need to read.
That, Merrill, right there, has a big black hole right above the girl's head on the street. There's a hole there.
You, you, you can use that.
No, I keep forgetting to report that. And on the opposite side, it's the same thing, like someone took a hammer or something.
You know, and I want to emphasize, this website's not public yet, not available to the general public, but I will send you an email tomorrow, so you have, at your free time, you know, take a look at it, go through all the other options, menus, and give us, like Jill said, you know, your feedback. Would you like to see something else, something different? Let's see, another thing that I don't think it's here yet, that Sue really liked is they'll be able to reserve facilities online. Like the community center, the casinos, they'll go, okay, Jacob Myers Park, and Sue's going to either approve or deny, so.
Will we have a secure portion of it for the city council?
Yes, that's going to be through the internet, but that's like a later phase. Right now, we're just focusing on the website. Any questions?
It looks very promising. I like it.
Thank you.
Very, very nice. Good job.
And thank you, Maricela, Sue, Michael, Kathleen, Katie. That's, and Donnie, that's a team that, you know, we meet regularly on a weekly basis. Oh, and one thing I want to point out, this week, we've been, we are being trained on how to update the website. And the team is like, wow, it's very easy. If you know Word, you know how to update, correct, Annabelle? Annabelle's like, oh, wow, this is so easy. So it's very easy, not just for the visitors, but also for us, the editors. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank Al and the entire team for working on this. And actually, that last comment about making it easier to update is really important. The current one is nearly impossible. And so that's made it, you know, it's made it very difficult to provide additional information. So this should allow it to be much more seamless and a much more regular part of everybody's regular responsibilities.
Very good. Moving on, item 1.3, Presentation, Declaring April as Safe Digging Month.
Mayor Michael Riddell is available to speak to this issue and to talk about the importance of using the services available to identify underground infrastructure.
Evening, Mayor, council members. As you can see, we want to declare April as the safe digging month. This is passed down through Underground Service Alert and the Enhanced 811 System, the one-call system that we now have within the state of California and across the nation. So basically, of a lot of utilities, this was brought to our attention by Pacific Gas and Electric, because we've been working closely with them here lately on the pipeline pathways. So what we would like to do is to have council pass a resolution declaring this as safe digging month, so that all the people within the City of Riverbank, that if you're going to do any type of digging anywhere, it doesn't matter if you're not sure, then you should always use Underground Service Alert. And you can do that by calling 811, and they'll walk you through all the steps in order to get a notification that will go out to all utilities, that will come out and mark anything that they have in the area. And if you, and this is now because of what has transpired in the last few years, well, several years, is now law. You're required to do this. It's not a, if you want to anymore. It's, you're required, because if you don't and you hit something, then you're not only going to be financially liable for it, but you could very well become criminally liable for it. So you want to keep that in mind when you go to dig. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Michael. And as you'll note, on the consent calendar, there is a resolution requesting or recommending that city council declare April as safe digging month. And rather, but we wanted to also make the most of the opportunity to publicize that and to publicize the 811 service. So appreciate councils listening to that and working with the staff on that issue.
On that note too, when you see the city vehicles going around nowadays, you'll see a sticker on the back tailgate that has the 811 symbol on it and the number.
Comments or questions? I believe you're here for 1.4.
Yes, sir.
Presentation on Proposed Framework for the Mandatory Conservation Measures by Order of Governor Brown.
Okay, so for you, I've got a short PowerPoint presentation to look at this. I'm sure that you have all seen or heard about it and what's going through and what's going to transpire. So it's forward, right, Maricela? Or down? It's okay. Technical difficulties. Yeah, that's not one of my slides. There we go. Okay, so once the governor made his proclamation, the state water board picked it up and basically came out with guidelines. And in that guidelines, they have their, basically pointed towards urban water users, meaning us. So they're portioning, as you can see, they're portioning the water supply reductions. So what they have come up and said is that the state will reduce 25% aggregateally, meaning that they came up with basically four categories, as you can see here. And in these four categories, they've got 55 gallons and under. This is per capita, per day, so that's per person, per day. 55 gallons and under are 10% reduction, 55 to 110, 20, 110 to 165, 25 and over 165 is 35%. They took September 2014 as their target month, which is obviously the biggest use month there is, because it's typically one of the hotter months. Unfortunately, we fell in the over 165 gallon range. So we're going to have to be required, if this passes, to reduce 35%, because we were at 192 gallons per capita in September of 2014. So that means we're having to reduce 35% if it passes state water board. And that will be, they will be voting on that May 5th and 6th. So basically, if you take a look at the state of California and how water breakdown within the state is, as you can see, and I know you've seen this before, but it's kind of becoming kind of my mantra here lately, is that basically you're seeing 45% agricultural, 45% for environmental, which will be fed and fish, and 10% urban, which is us. So the 10% user is now going to have to reduce 35% if the mandate follows through on Department of Water Resources, and I don't see it not. Now, can we do that? I believe we can. We'll have to work at it, and we'll have to monitor it very closely. But I do believe we can accomplish this. That's just kind of a quick presentation. I know it's rather fast. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a couple of comments that were brought to me in my new position. I have comments every day. One of them is, there are some sprinkler heads that are off. Rover has to be aware of those issues and correcting them. Most notably from, I haven't observed it personally, but from hearsay or direct comments to me along the River Cove area. But I've noticed that in crossroads and others, they do get corrected.
I do like feedback. And there's also a lot of timing of the watering is going even along the crossroads in the afternoon, so that should not be, so those are areas that we need to work on. How are they going to measure that per person? Is that, is that starting, let's say, May 1st?
It's going to be mandatory reporting. We've already been reporting since September last year. That's how they got to, see, we collect the data so they can punish us. So we've been reporting since September of last year. So that's the reason, I think the reason why they use September 2014 data. And we'll have to report our data every month. So I'll have to take our water production, and I've got a formula to figure out per capita use, rated at, basically, in the City of Riverbank, and about 90% of the water used in the City of Riverbank is urban water use. We don't have that much industrial, no big and wet industrial. So I'll have to report those numbers. And then based off of those numbers, they will, will say, yes, we're doing good, or no, we're not.
I'm talking city reporting to personnel. Do we have any methodology to say, your consumption is not meeting the governor's projection?
At this point, we do not, other than overall. But that is the beauty of the new AMR/AMI system that's going on. Once those water meters are in place, we'll be able to get a handle on this very easily. But up until that point in time, we're going to have to pay real close attention to the use in the landscapes. I've already had a discussion with Sue about the parks, and Kathleen about landscape and lighting. And we also have discussed putting on a part-time staff through the summer for water conservation. In other words, having those individuals going out and patrolling the streets for water use, type thing. And then we, because we do have a restrictive water ordinance, we already have the ability to go ahead and warn or sign, if we so deem necessary.
Any comments, questions?
Will the days that people can water their landscape, will that change, will that decrease?
No, no, at this point in time, that's still the same. The only way you would have to, what the state mandates is that if you don't have restrictive water ordinance on your books already, then you have to follow their guidelines, which is two days a week. But because we already have the ordinance in place and we're enforcing the ordinance, we can stick with our ordinance. Unless, you know, things were to, let's say, we got down the road, for whatever reason, we're using way more water than we're supposed to, then they can come in and enforce us the change. But at this point, we don't have to change anything, we just need to enforce it.
Just interesting to note, there is a bill in the Senate right now that's looking at giving tax credits, which I could have used dearly, to, if you change your landscape in your front yard or lawn.
in your front yard or lawn, to a non-lawn use, either for shrubs or for, you know, the old vegetables or whatever. You take that out of production. So maybe something to keep an eye on, and if you're inclined, convert your front yard to a...
Yeah, the Governor Brown has made this statement that he's going to make funds available to remove 50 million square feet of turf in the state of California. Stop and think about it, 50 million square feet is not a lot. There's a lot of grass in the state of California. As you get down to Southern California, Beverly Hills and those areas. But that, they, there are going to be funds available for that, to you to pull your lawn and put in something that's drought resistant, that uses less water. How much will it be?
If I can lose 35%, I'll be happy. Thank you. Item 2, Public Comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda in the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Before I open it up to the public, I have some public comments on my own. First, I'd like everyone to understand that the city of Riverbank embraces the preservation of agriculture land within Stanislaus County. We fully support LAFCO policy 22, which is ag land mitigation, one for one. We're disappointed in the methodology for determining the minimum payment that the cities will be required. This disappointment stems from constraining the, some aspects of the free market. That means we can never truly negotiate a fair market value from the city's perspective. We're concerned that seven cities oppose the change, but the city representative that represents the city ignored our inputs and voted opposite of our desires. Now, some of you may have heard or seen reports that the cities are seeking punitive measures against the current city representative to LAFCO. That is not the case. If there is any action taken, it'd be purely administrative in nature. Thank you. Any public comment?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ramon Bermudez, in Riverbank for 21 years, and still shooting for 22nd year. Continuing on your comments, Mr. Mayor, there's an article in the paper that comes out, the opinion that you gave of Mayor Matthew Hughes-Bigman. There is one that says Mayor O'Brien went too far. I'm ashamed to be a citizen of Riverbank. Our mayor, Richard O'Brien, implies that fellow Mayor Matt Bigman of Houston is an American communist for supporting ag land preservation by his love of vote, David Tucker from Riverbank. About the amount of, per acre that they will be putting in $7,305. And here, the comment here is that the fee is a jump change compared to what developers who will sell property for when they are finished. That figure will surely not purchase an acre for agricultural preservation, as farmers are refocusing on crops that get better prices, and they will laugh in your face if offer such a pittance, which is very low. Mr. Mayor, on the day of the meeting, what Mayor Bigman continues here on the comments in the newspaper from Molesto Vio Sandy, our Easter, Sandy says that, "When the seven cities came out against the proposed formula, I tried to work with each mayor and explain why their position was flawed. Bigman said they didn't listen to me. I got silenced. They wouldn't engage with me on a policy level because it was done deal and I was to get out of their way." I don't think that's a real nice business-like manner to be conducting business in the name of the city of Riverbank. And I personally think that if you went on against however many mayors got together with you against Mr. Bigman's vote, why didn't you go against Mr. Jim De Martinez, our supervisor for the Stanislaus County, or why didn't you go against Mr. Terry Whitrow? They all three voted, and it's 3 to 2. To me, that's a majority of votes, sir. It's not a minority. Even if you're having seven mayors against the board that you formed, then you shouldn't be in there. You know, if you're not going to listen to them, the same thing with those mayors, they shouldn't be part of it, because it's not a fair game anymore. It's not a way to conduct business anymore. When you don't listen, and then you want your opinion and your vote to be the one that is voted for, well, reality is, we have very much necessity for agriculture here in the state of California, and not only in this region. And if there is no vegetables, Mr. Bigman is B.K. for keeper man. He's a beekeeper man. He's got a real last name that goes to his work. And if you didn't know that, there is millions of bees being destroyed because of bacteria, because of pesticides, and because of other matters. We should be rooting for this agriculture to keep up, otherwise, we won't have about 27% to 29% where the fruits and vegetables won't be there. I thank you very much.
Any further public comment?
Haskell Moore, 3848 Patterson Road. And I have a comment about this Patterson Road revising, that we went through a little seminar with John Anderson on March 28th on Saturday. And residential area between Terminal Avenue and Tina Lane, that's the only area of Patterson Road you want to revise so large that has residents and two businesses. We've got a liquor store, a mini mart, I mean, and a Durbel trust, which are not affected. But they're, the smallest that they're talking about, they want to make this thing, is a terminal in the center, two lanes on the, going east and west. To do that, they're going to take the parking away from the curb. The bike lane, wheelchair ramps, electric carts and bicycles, these are bike lanes. I know you want to put a bike lane eight foot wide on the other side of the road, but that don't do any good for the people and electric carts and wheelchairs, some you have to push. How they going to cross that road that live in the middle of the block? Also, the properties there are too small. They don't have parking for more than, some of them, maybe one, two cars in a driveway. Some don't have a driveway, especially rental. They don't have a driveway. They have no choice of what they have in the back. So we're accepting that, the people on Patterson Road are, because not only that, but we have sidewalk with telephone poles in the center. Years ago, they, they insisted that myself and my neighbor go underground service, which was great, we did. And instead of trying to do all of it, they just went with us, and they stopped. Then they put sidewalks in years later, and here come the, around the poles. And I see kids running into those poles. I know that post being on sidewalk with bicycles all the time after dark, and people walking into them. Also, we have a problem with the garbage. We put our garbage cans out there on the street on Tuesday nights, and if that lane's gone and the cars are driving right against the curb, we can't put garbage cans on sidewalks. And then you got students going to three schools in our area all use that sidewalk. Now, you're going to have kids walking down a sidewalk, on a five-foot sidewalk, with telephone poles in the center of it, traffic is driving by them six inches away from some of them, 35 miles an hour, and you got trucks. And trucks have, Brian Spotts cars don't have, trust can't stop as fast as a car, and a truck driver can't see what's on the right side of his truck. As far as sidewalks concerned, about half of that truck and trailer is blind. I'm an ex-trucker, still got license. I know that for a fact. So by the time, you have to say, hit something big with a truck to know you hit something. With a car, you don't. So it's really a dangerous area for people walking on the sidewalk. And, what else I have? Oh, okay, I kept trying to think, why do you want a wide lane? Why do you want to make Patterson Lane a highway? And I thought, I was thinking, they want to move the highway over here, to Patterson Road. Then in the last council meeting I was here, I realized this, 96, I think it's 96 homes were built out on Snedeker, Snedeker Road. If there's a car to a house, so what's 96? And if you double that, it's 192, and three times that, three cars to a family is 288, and four cars to a family is 384, which is unusual, this day and age. If you got company or visitors, you know, they have no one to park on Patterson Road. And if you put three cars to a family, 288 vehicles extra on Patterson Road daily, I see we need four lanes, you know? But we don't need those houses in a drought situation either. But that's another story. I think I covered about everything I wanted to cover on that. Thank you very much.
Any further comment? Seeing none, we move to the consent calendar, consistent of item 3A, wave reading, item 3B, approval of February 24th, 2015, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, consideration of continuing the declared emergency for the 7th Street Storm Drain Outfall Line destabilizing bankment. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adopting updated financial policies and procedures for return checks. Item 3E, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, adopting pay schedule compensation plans for July 1st, 2010, July 1st, 2011, October 1st, 2013, July 1st, 2014, and January 5th, 2015. Item 3F, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, declaring April 2015 as Safe Digging Month. Is there any members who wish to pull any of these items? Is there anyone from the public wishing to pull any of the consent items? Seeing none, I pull it back to the City Council for a recommendation.
I'll move that we approve this consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve in a second for the consent calendar.
I'd like to make it now that I did revise the minutes of February 24th to reflect the Vice Mayor's Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Council Authority Member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4.1, River Cove Parking and River Access Options.
Mayor members of the City Council, as you may recall, this has been an item that's come before you for discussion via public comment, as well as via community meetings, and ultimately became a subject matter for the strategic plan. An initial discussion took place at the last City Council meeting, where a number of options to address some of the neighborhood issues along River Cove Drive, along Stanislaus River, were reviewed by the City Council, and there were public comments made as well. At that time, the City Council gave direction to come back, kind of narrow some of those options, and focus in on some of the solutions that seemed most viable for implementation over the course of this summer, as well as potentially for the future. So this time, I'd like to bring up our Director of Parks and Recreation, Sue Fitzpatrick, to provide an overview of those options and provide you an update on the information that's been gathered since that time.
Okay, members of the council and mayor, we are back tonight, and we have narrowed down the options a bit. Angie Timponi is the resident who has taken kind of the lead on this neighborhood project, and she was unable to be here tonight. I know we do have some representatives from River Cove here, though, to represent the neighborhood. What Angie was hoping to do since our last meeting was to poll the subdivision a little bit more and get their feeling on some of the options we had talked about, because a couple of those options will impact the entire subdivision. And she was concerned about that, as we are, too. There wasn't time to do that, so we have kind of included that in our discussion tonight. But just so you know, we didn't, she didn't have a chance to complete that. Also, we did talk to our legal counsel a little bit more, researched a little bit more information, so hopefully we'll be able to have some direction tonight, because we are approaching summer very quickly. So just as a review here, this is what the subdivision looks like. So you can see, it is a rather large subdivision that would be affected by some of the, some of the decisions we make. But the highlighted area is the area that the city owns, and that is along the river. And that's where the problems have been occurring as far as access to the river. There's about three main access points there. One to the far left, where, to the west, where we call the bamboo area, and that's one of the main access points. And then there's one about midway, near Presswick. And then there's a smaller access point up towards the right-hand side, where there have been some homeless camping there and things, and some, a lot of garbage. But, so there's really three points we're talking about. And just as a review, what, for anyone who's coming new into this, the River Cove Parking and Access Challenges have been usually from May through August are the, probably the most troublesome months, and when there's a lot of 100-degree weather, that's when we really see the problems, or on holidays. But there's, at times, 50 cars parked along River Cove Drive. A lot of people are consuming alcohol, speeding on the streets, undesirable behavior in general. We've picked up a lot of garbage. There's some fire hazard where people bring in their personal barbecues and also build their personal little barbecue pits there. And vandalism, a lot of vandalism on the trees, digging steps into the levee to provide a walking path, and things like that. So we've narrowed it down to three options this time, and with also a proposal for action. So we'll start with option one, and that was to increase the private security and the sheriff patrol and garbage pickup. The last two summers, we've done this, and I believe we've made an impact. We just haven't solved the problem. We've picked up a lot of garbage. We are out there three times during the week, during, during the week, and then on the weekends, early morning, we were sending a crew out to haul away garbage. And then we also had, the sheriff patrol was increased, and then we had private security. So this would just almost double this. We would be out there every day. We'd go twice a day on the weekends, and we'd provide two guards four hours a day on the weekends. And this would be from probably May through August, depending on the weather and the situation. The pros for that is private security can issue citations and assist with Sheriff Department Communications. And the cons, or the cars will continue to park in the neighborhood, and they would continue to access the river. The cost to that would be $8,500 approximately. The second option that we talked a lot about last time is parking by permit-only signage. This would be enforced by the sheriff's department. Permits would be issued to the residents. Public notice and ordinances would be put in place. And this is where, this would affect the entire subdivision, because what we're worried about is if we just did that along River Cove Drive, it would push the vehicles into the neighborhood, and then that would cause another issue. And we don't know how far people would actually walk to get to the river. So we are thinking we should probably sign the, a good part, if not all of the subdivision. So we want to have time to poll the neighborhood, if that is what we decide to do. The pros is may alleviate parking in the area. The cons is the entire subdivision would require signage. Behavior issues still may occur. Drop-offs and walk-ins still may occur. The cost of enforcement and additional staffing is unclear. And with this, we mean, you know, we're really, really not sure what department would handle the processing of the permits, and then all of the things that come with that. So we have to think that through and see what additional workload that's going to create, and is it going to work? The estimated cost for that is about $10,500 plus enforcement and any additional staffing that might be needed. Option number three would be to post no trespassing signs on city property, which would be along that highlighted area I showed you. Information to be provided... Information to be provided to establish spaces for prohibiting access. So what we would need to do is, we would need to be able to document and show that there is a public health and safety concern, which I think we have that. We would want to talk more about that and make sure that we do have enough, but from what we've heard and what we've seen, we do have a lot of photos and information that do make us have some concern there. The pros is this is affordable and if enforced would eventually get the word out. This would limit city liability and reduce public health and safety concerns. The cons is this may be difficult to enforce without a fence due to the claim that the sign was not seen. This would prohibit river access by all, including River Cove residents. So again, this is something that's going to be, this would prohibit access for everyone, not just people from other areas, would be the River Cove residents as well. And the cost for this would be about $3,000. After a lot of discussion and kind of just looking at all the options, the course of action that we are proposing is, or for consideration is due to the time constraints, we, like I said, we have spring and summer right around the corner, we're going to be dealing with this. And the need for polling the neighbors and get, not rushing into something that may not work is maybe poll the neighborhood and that would be done by the neighborhood committee with a subcommittee formed and Angie Timponi would lead that group, as well as the city would provide opportunity for public input. So we would be able to see how the residents feel about some of the options, trespassing versus, the no trespassing versus some of the other options. Provide Sheriff Patrol, private security and garbage pickup. So we would continue to do that to mitigate the problem meanwhile. Encourage residents to call the Sheriff's Department if illegal activity occurs. Review reports on a weekly basis and the impact of our interventions. So we'd be taking a closer look at everything this summer. Compile photos of litter, erosion, and public health and safety concerns, more than what we already have. Present information gathered to the City Council in September for further review of options. And this financial impact would be about $5,000. So it wouldn't be as much as option number one, as far as that's pretty much doubling everything, it's somewhere in between. So any questions? Or we have, I think we have some River Cove.
Representative from River Cove here would like to speak?
You have to get up if you want to speak.
No, no, at the podium. You have to be on TV.
Thank you. City Council, my name is Richard Booth, I live at 2627 Briar Cliff Drive, which is on the south side of the River Cove area, but we walk it every day. And today we walked all the way down to 7th Street. So I think a lot of the problem is people, we hand out flyers every month for a meeting, door-to-door, we go to door-to-door. I think the last time we had a meeting was maybe eight people out of maybe 400 or maybe 1,000. So either they're not concerned with what's going on or I really don't know. We're banging on doors, we're trying our best to get people to come out and support us. And Angie asked us to come tonight because she was busy with something else and it is a problem. And I think the major part of it has become because once you started charging at Michael Jacob Myers Park, then they came over to our side. So you got, and Mr. Campbell, probably he was, he could tell you that he's walked the dunes down there, you could see where there's fires going and it's just one problem after another. And I don't, I don't know if there is really an answer, but thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this topic?
My name is Edward Jones, I live at Park Sierra, Mobile Home Park. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. For instance, Pebble Beach in Monterey area, it's all gated, but everybody that lives in there has a tag on their automobile. Why couldn't we do that with River Cove? Everybody that lives in River Cove has a tag and they put on the grill or somewhere where it's constantly observed. So then the authorities come by, you find a vehicle parked along the river and it doesn't have the tag, well, it's illegally parking there. And a sign coming into River Cove area would, I suggest, would read, "Private parking, River Cove residents only." Can we do that? That's just an idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, any other comment? Okay, I'll bring it back for a discussion and maybe direction from the City Council. One of the items that, a misconception that this is just happening since we started charging at Jacob Myers Park, we've been having, we know that from 2004 onwards, we've had this problem and it's been ongoing. The neighborhood does a good job of policing themselves. If we did during the summer months, when we have the private security, have the private security enforcing no trespassing, that would be easy to do. It says, costs us about $3,000. When there is no private security, it's self-policing, the neighborhood will police themselves. And that way that if there are issues, they can call the sheriffs, somebody's out there trespassing, trespassing, no trespassing law can be enforced quite easily. Again, self-policing, and I think that there is a lot of leeway in self-policing. But that is just my direction, my recommendation for direction. That have an immediate impact, it's measurable, and we can see how it goes throughout the year.
So then what would the enforcement be for no trespassing? Be whatever the citation would be for no, which is? Is there, I know there's a fine, but I don't know what that fine is.
Well, I believe that we could either set a fine or that there is some fines already. It's a criminal act.
I have a quick question about option two. Do you mind putting up the map of River Cove real quick? While you're doing that, my question is, do you really have to put up that many signs? I know putting up signs is quite an expense and we're looking at a real expense for this one, but my question is, do you really have to put up that many signs? There's not that many entrances and exits to River Cove. If I am correct, there's one down there at the end where you go underneath the pipeline and then that's the only way to get in and the other exit, I'm sorry, there's two, you can get in from the, on Priestwick too. So there's two of them. Why would you have to put signs through the entire neighborhood? Couldn't you just put two that state that, you know, this is parking? I guess I just confused on why you have to put signs in the entire neighborhood when you can post it that the two, and even for trespassing signs too. I don't know that the expense has to be that great if you're putting no trespassing at the entrances and exits, there's only two, two ways in and out. I don't know, just a question.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe Michael or Chief. No, I know that the parking by permit signage I've seen in series, they're so many feet apart, I think I counted 75 feet apart. I don't know if there's a reason for that.
The political standard is 100 feet. And actually, if you research the vehicle code, it isn't much help, but in terms of effective enforcement, if it goes before a magistrate, then they want to see every 100 feet. That's basically what they've deemed reasonable. That's regarding no, you know, no stopping, no parking, parking by permit, those types of signs. When it comes to no trespassing signage, I believe it's three per mile, so you wouldn't have to post as many. But again, because you have multiple access points and for, even though the penal code, penal code 602 trespassing states that that's what you need for effective prosecution in order to prove our case in court and for the DA to file on these types of cases, they're going to want to see adequate posting where somebody can't basically state that they didn't see the sign, you know, upon first entering. So they're going to, basically any trail that accesses, you're going to need those signs as well as on both ends of River Cove. And certainly you would need along that part of River Cove, you would need, I think that's, is that 3,000 feet, I believe? So I would say three and then every access point. The no trespassing shouldn't be as expensive as the permit parking, I wouldn't think.
Plus you would also have it from the riverside.
Correct.
Above the beach.
As far as the no trespassing, yes, you would.
Are you saying the signs would be posted along the sidewalk, right, and up by the levee area up there?
For no trespassing, yes, because somebody could boat or raft or tube down the river and then they would need to be notified that it's city property and they can't trespass from river access.
Then nobody can access, right?
Well, there's, right.
Correct.
Self-policing.
Do I have a question for clarification? For the proposed course of action that you propose, providing the increased Sheriff Patrol's private security, about how much of the increase would it be? Would it be similar to the option that you stated as one of the options above there? About how much would you increase it if you did that?
We'd go ahead and have the garbage pick up twice because what was happening is we'd send people out early in the morning and then we'd get calls and it was as if we weren't out there at all. So I know that we need to do an afternoon garbage dump too, so that would be a given and we'd be out there every day during the week. So we would increase that already.
How about your sheriff patrols?
Yeah, sheriff's patrols would be up to the chief, but private security, instead of having, in option one, we had two guards posted there four hours a day. That would be difficult, that's more than what we have across the river when we're dealing with 1,000 people. So we'd probably find some medium, looking at the weather and looking at the trend and kind of not spend more than we have to, but spend what we need to solve the problem. So I think it would be, it would be definitely more than we did last year, but not as much as two posted there four hours a day.
Would it be practical to combine posting some of the signs as this is discussed because there's not going to be as many signs according to what the chief just said? And we just talked about the locations and combining that with this in an effort to see if it is actually going to help or not? Or would that be too expensive?
What would the signs say, the no trespassing?
The same types of signs that you were talking about, you know, to try to help eliminate the problem.
So the no trespassing and then having some security there too to help? Yeah, we could, we could definitely come up with a plan.
Then we're kind of combining some options per se. Another thing I see based upon what Mr. Booth has just said, there seems to be some difficulty in getting the polling done. The season's about upon us and we're going to have to make a decision if we're going to do something to try to help the neighborhood. Otherwise, we're just going to keep spinning our wheels all summer long and nothing's going to happen. So based upon your proposal, I currently support going with that proposal and maybe adding the signs because the neighborhood isn't quite ready, hasn't polled them and it may take a while based upon what Mr. Booth said to get that completed and then review it again and visit it in September. But we need to do something and take some action now.
I was actually quite boisterous at the last City Council meeting about having the beach and area closed and putting up no trespassing signs. And I guess I was really hoping to see some more folks out here that live in River Cove giving us some real clear definition. Yes, we want trespassing signs, no, we don't want it, yes, we want permitted parking, no, we don't want permitted parking. And I know, because I follow very closely the social media site for River Cove and I've been to several of the meetings and me personally, I can sit up here and fight for you folks and rant and rave and know what I want. I don't want the beach closed, but when it comes down to looking at something like this and, and to me, we're looking at, we're looking at dollar signs here. We're looking at $3,000, we're looking at $5,000, we're looking at $10,000. And I, if you go back and look at the tape, I was all for getting some permitted parking in there, but I'm not hearing folks come out here and say that's what they really want. And if I'm not hearing that, I can't sit up here in good conscience and vote for something that we're going to spend $10,000 on when I don't have this room packed with people from River Cove going, yes, this is what we want. I really, and I even posted stuff over the, over the last week, wanted to hear some real clear definition from some of the River Cove folks. And so some of my council members here probably are going, whoa, what's she doing down there? But I got to say, when we come down and we're sitting here and we're responsible for writing a check and spending the city's money, and I'm going to say it over again, I tend to be real conservative and the mayor sat right there and asked me at the last City Council meeting, well, you know, you're ranting and raving going on about this and where are you going to come up with the money? And I was like, well, I don't know, but I have a real hard time closing the beach. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there that I was really hoping to see some more folks down here talking about exactly what they want. And I just, I'm a little frustrated with the situation. I don't think we have a lot of time to sit here and dilly-dally and, you know, carry it on or whatever. And personally, I'm really struggling with writing a check and signing off for a huge amount of money when I don't have the whole support that I feel River Cove wants to go that route. So that's kind of where I'm at, which might be a little bit of a change from the last City Council meeting. So I wanted that perfectly out there that, you know, if we don't have the folks behind it, I'm kind of struggling spending a huge amount of money. So I'm going for the other two.
Would you be willing to go with the proposed course of action currently and then come up with a definitive answer in the near future?
Yeah, I think this is a really good, and I appreciate all your work on it. I think this is a really good interim solution financially and I think it addresses some of the problems. I think, you know, it's, we're moving in the right direction. We all know and I think we can all agree that there's some issues going on down there and I think this is an excellent compromise, I really do.
I'd just like to say, I also agree with the mayor and I've attended, about self-policing, I've attended several of the River Cove meetings and discussed situations with them. And the one thing that we want to do is find something that will work, that if we do spend the money, it will work. And several of the propositions that we propose, they're expensive, but there's no guarantee they'll work if you spend the money. And currently, I think you've come up with a good option so that it can be discussed in the neighborhood more as they poll and come up with their options, because I agree with what Councilman Jones Cruz said also. The neighborhood needs to show us what they need too. We can't just make all the decisions. So I could live with the current option without a problem and I think it would fit the bill and it would be something that we would be doing to try to make things better.
Anybody else want to provide direction?
We make a motion.
We're just providing direction.
Or providing direction, that's all we're doing now?
Okay, you want to do it in form, a formal direction motion?
Yeah.
Who so moves?
I'll move that we direct staff to adopt, move forward with the proposed course of action.
I'll second it.
A motion to move forward with the proposed course of action as stated in a second.
Consul member Campbell.
Yes.
Consul member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. If I could clarify, does that include the trespassing signs?
No, it does not. That was not in her option.
Wasn't in the original.
But that is something that could be discussed as we get closer and...
We'll bring it back in September.
You may want to think, okay.
Thank you.
Item 4.2, second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 2015-006 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California. and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving rezoning of 22, 22 properties in Riverbank, California.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, you may recall that at the last city council meeting, this, this item was thoroughly reviewed with Mr. John Anderson providing a staff report. At this time, we are presenting it for second reading and recommending adoption. And Mr. Anderson is also available to address any questions if you have any at this, at this time.
Are there any questions from the public? Are there any questions from the city council? I bring it to the city council for action.
I make a motion that we approve item 4.2.
A second.
We have a motion to approve item 4.2 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien. Motion passes five zero.
Item 4.4, point C, three, second reading introduction of ordinance number 2015-007 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving the rezoning of 17.9 acres to planned development located at APN 062-02-010 and APN 062-020-025, a project known as Diamond Bar Estates East.
Yes, and again, Mayor members of the City Council, for those in the audience who may not be familiar with the process, is that whenever there is an ordinance, is that it goes through the first reading for public review and publication, and then it comes back to the city council for a second reading and adoption. So a process that while we're familiar with, it may not be familiar with the public. And so again, this is the second reading. A thorough staff report was provided at the last city council meeting. And again, staff is available to address any questions of the city council as well as members of the public if there are any questions regarding this matter. But this evening, it is scheduled for second reading.
Any questions from the public? Any comments? Saying none, do I have any comments or questions from the city council?
No, but I'd like to make a motion to accept item 4.3, the second reading of the ordinance.
I second it.
We have a motion to accept item 4.3 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 4.4, second reading and introduction of ordinance number 2015-008 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving rezoning of 11.34 acres to planned development located at APN 062-020-00519 and 027, a project known as Diamond Bar Estates West.
Yes, and this is the second reading for Diamond Bar Estates West, and staff is recommending adoption at this time. Again, a staff report was provided at the last city council meeting, and Mr. Anderson is available to address any questions from the council or the public.
Does the public have any comments or questions?
Good evening again. My name is Ramon Bermudez, 6261 Roselle Avenue. Can I ask where the maps for these proposals are?
I believe...
Where the maps for this? Well, actually, I was, I was gonna look for it when the 4.3 was being discussed, but it was too late to come back and ask for the map also for that. What is the area in Riverbank that is being proposed for this?
It was detailed the last time. And I believe it's in our staff report? It is in our staff report.
Oh, but it's not here. They don't have here available?
It is back there in the agenda binder. There is an agenda binder back there.
Oh, in the binder? So we don't get the chance to see it before we can come back and...
It's been posted for a long time.
You can take a look at it. It is back there.
Could I have?
Do I have any other public comment? Saying none, I bring it to the city council for comment or recommendation.
I make a motion that we accept item 4.4.
A second.
We have a motion to accept item 4.4, the second reading, and a motion to approve, second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 4.5, second reading introduction of ordinance number 2015-009 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California amending Title 15 zoning, section 153-003. Definitions to include e-cigarettes, hookah lounge, and vapor bar. Amending one, section 153-077, uses permitted with a use permit in the neighborhood commercial district C1 Zone 2. Section 153-093, uses permitted within a use permit in the general commercial district C2 Zone N3. Section 153-107, uses permitted with a use permit in the commercial industrial CM Zone of the City Municipal Code.
And Mayor members of the City Council, this is the final second reading of the evening. It is recommended that the city council adopt this, this ordinance this evening.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? Saying none, I bring it to the council for comments or recommendations.
I make a motion that we approve item 4.5.
A second.
We have a motion to approve item 4.5 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item five, public hearing. Item 5.1, a resolution, one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving the general plan amendment redesignating 83 parcels comprised of 18.49 acres to low-density residential, LDR, mixed-use CX1, medium-density residential, MDR, high-density residential, HDR, and civic, C, as shown on the attached land use map and modification to the general plan circulation diagram, as shown on the attached circulation diagram, a project known as Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan. Two, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving rezoning of the downtown specific plan area to SP3, specific plan number three, located in the downtown area of Riverbank, easterly of Calendar Avenue, south of Atchison Street, westerly of Fourth Street, and north of Patterson Road, a project known as the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan.
I guess I have to excuse myself. Mayor members of the City Council, it is, it's great pleasure that I introduce John Anderson, our community development director on a contract basis, to present to you the downtown specific plan. We are recommending that the city council consider the plan, listen to public comment, open the public hearing, and introduce this for second reading for consider, and will recommend adoption, ultimately recommending adoption of this plan. At this time, I will hand it over to Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, Contract Community Development Director, City of Riverbank, tonight presenting to you a project that, quite frankly, the city's been working on a long time. It's something that initially was contracted for back in 2006, something that the former redevelopment agency was very in tune with, felt was extremely important, especially after the investment was made down the downtown core area, to come up with something that's much more specific for the land uses within the downtown core area, certainly more specific than what was suggested in the newly adopted envisioned general plan. There are a lot of moving parts with this project, and I'm, I am here tonight to tell you that there's more paperwork unfortunately that I gave you tonight. One of the pieces of paperwork is a copy of the planning commission minutes of March 17th, including a specific letter that was submitted to the commission and was considered by the commission before they rendered their opinions. And this is a letter that was forwarded by the legal representatives of Sun Garden Ganji. It's my understanding that one of the representatives of Sun Garden Ganji is in tonight's audience, and he'll probably be talking about this item during the public hearing. So there's the minutes that are part of that. Also, they're available in the back of the room in case anybody would like to get a copy of those. There's also some additional changes to the errata sheet, which is kind of a summary of any of the changes that have been made to the January 2015 version of the downtown specific plan. Quite frankly, some of these red line changes, as you can see, are just more administrative than anything else. And quite frankly, they're already in my notes, but they were pointed out to me by actually the legal representative of Sun Garden Ganji that these needed to be resolved. So they're, they're definitely needed. They need to be folded into the council's deliberations tonight, and I want to make sure that that point is made. And they're also available in the back of the room. One last, well, actually, that's not true. There's two other issues. We have modified a proposed draft resolution for your council's consideration to not only talk about the general plan changes that'd be necessary, general plan land use designations and circulation modifications, but also to make statement to the fact that the council's taking action to adopt the specific plan that's being presented to you tonight as well. I mean, it's inherently clear under the ordinance that we're rezoning these properties to SP3, which is representative of the downtown specific plan. But this, this resolution that I've presented to you that's modified as attachment eight clearly demonstrates not only general plan change, but also the council's intent to adopt that both the general, to adopt both the downtown specific plan and the errata sheet that I've represented to you tonight. Now, we have received, and council has copies, of a number of pieces of communication from various concerned citizens in and around Riverbank, including a letter from Mr. Haskell Moore that has been presented to you. In fact, both the city manager and I have met with Haskell Moore to attempt to address the issues that he's raised. He may be in the audience tonight. I can't, it's hard for me to turn around and look, but, but anyway, we think we've resolved his issues, but again, he'll be given an opportunity to address his concerns tonight. We received an email, I should say, city clerk received an email from Margarita. Margarita has some very specific questions regarding her property and what took her, I guess, zoning would be applicable, when a project would be started, and then what kind of phasing this might consist of and when, anyway. This needs to be clearly understood as, as a regulatory document, not as the beginning of any particular construction project. So we've described it to the community as a project, as a regulatory document that will survive decades, and it provides a basic framework upon which land use and buildings of construction, signage and whatnot would be allowed within this defined downtown specific plan area. And then we received a letter this afternoon at 3:48 from Evelyn Halbert. It's one, two, three, four. It's about four pages long, actually, three, oh, three pages long. Anyway, detailing the concerns that, that she has with this planning effort. And there's, there's a number of issues that she's raised that are very deeply rooted, and quite frankly, some of the same issues that I think that she's had since this effort began way back when, when the city council at that time felt is appropriate to enter into some type of cooperative agreement with the Sun Garden Ganji folks. So, so I, I quite honestly haven't had a chance to address, nor am I prepared tonight to address every single one of the issues that Evelyn has raised in her letter. But quite frankly, many of these issues are the same issues that we've dealt with, you know, through this downtown specific plan effort over the, well, since 2006. And we've seen a lot of correspondence back and forth. Not that they're not valid concerns, certainly they're valid concerns, but again, they're the same issues for the most part that have been raised throughout this entire process. So after having said all that, and now going through this presentation, we have, we have a PowerPoint here. And this works? Yes. So we're talking, we're gonna talk about plan objectives, the plan boundaries, the district zones, which is a little bit different, district zone regulations, plan implementation, and then potential future modifications. Again, this is a living, breathing document, so we know upfront that there's gonna be certain land uses, certain proposals, certain adjustments to this document that'll be necessary. So we have crafted language in the implementation section of the downtown specific plan that allow us administratively at a staff point to be able to make adjustments to the plan. And if those adjustments are major as defined in the document, then they would have to go back through the planning commission and the city council for consideration, much like they would have to go through this process of adoption of the downtown specific plan. So workshops. In addition to all the workshops that were held, you know, between 2006 and July 15th, 2014, you know, we've also conducted these workshops. We used the planning commission as an advisory body to conduct these workshops, which were open to the public, either concerned individuals and/or folks that are within the area, or quite frankly, just within Riverbank in general, to attend and represent their comments July 15th, August 19th, and September 16th. And at that time, we went over the plan, all the rules, what its intent was as a zoning instrument, as a regulatory tool, and afforded the audience, project, the audience and/or affected property owners the ability to comment on the plan. So the guiding principles, again, this is part of the original effort, was to protect small-town character, to identify community identity, and to talk about choice and diversity. Pro quality of life, of course, to build on land use options, one of which was the investment in the downtown core area. So obviously, we know what the setting is. You know, the picture up in the upper left-hand corner shows the investment that's been made by the city. We've got other opportunities with the Del Rio site, and then, of course, with the Bordona building, and then with the, with the former Contadina Cannery site. And then, of course, you know, SR 108, concerns associated with that, trying to deal with, you know, the traffic and promoting business and, and embracing, quite frankly, the businesses that we currently have, like Snow White Drive-In. And then, of course, dealing with some of the improvements in downtown Coria, one of which includes the skate park. So one of the early deliberations that the commission had, and ultimately in their August discussion, settled on a boundary, was to define, you know, what is the appropriate defined boundary for the plan? The original plan boundary, quite frankly, you know, went all the way over to, I think this is Eighth, all the way over to Seventh, may have gone to Eighth, but included a much, much larger area than what is being suggested today. The real focus, the real focus on the plan was the downtown core area and what's going on with the cannery, and of course, you know, the SR 108 corridor, and, you know, kind of the heart of, you know, this redevelopment effort. You know, again, we don't have redevelopment agency, but the idea is that there is opportunity long-term for change, and that's what we're trying to plan for, long-term opportunities for change. So the plan, right from the get-go, because it's a regulatory document, was to set up districts, and in the plan, there are a number of districts, including downtown core, which is shown in red, including the downtown general, which is kind of a purple, Highway Boulevard, which is blue, mixed use, which is kind of a tan, and then the yellow would be the downtown neighborhood. And obviously, in a number of areas, we have a downtown neighborhood that's existing and it's vibrant, and it needs to be, you know, protected and preserved. And you'll hear more, more about that, you know, from others that'll be speaking during the public hearing, I'm sure. In order for the downtown specific plan and, and the district boundaries to be consistent with the adopted general plan, there are a number of properties whose general plan designation needs to be changed to correspond with the uses that are prescribed within the district boundaries. That's why we've had to go an extra step to notify, you know, all these property owners, there's like 83 property owners, of a general plan change that would be necessary in order to support this specific plan as a regulatory document. So there was another layer of notification that was given specifically to these property owners that we're, we're talking about here. So this is the existing GP designations, and this represents proposed GP... and this represents proposed GP designations. Probably some of the most significant are, or it would include, we have high-density residential designations along Topeka and then adjacent to SR 108. And we've suggested that, you know, we go to a more mixed use along, you know, SR 108. And then to be consistent with some of the existing R2 or medium-density residential zoning, that this be changed to medium-density residential, which sets a consistent density, consistent density to what the sites are currently zoned, not trying to make such a subtle change to what might be allowed long-term as part of the plan. So that was the concept. The district zones, refer back to this map here and the colored maps. This colored map corresponds with the district zones. Again, downtown core, mixed-use neighborhood, downtown neighborhood, downtown general, highway boulevard, and of course, and of course, the cannery district. Then from there, we have what they call district zone regulations, which is kind of the meat and potatoes or zoning chart. But it does more than that because it talks about, you know, the types of, the types of use categories that would be allowed, you know, per zone, district. It talks about setback standards, height of buildings, and so on, so forth. So this really becomes, you know, the strong regulatory code for the plan in and of itself. So obviously, there's related documents. You know, we have the adopted general plan. We have zoning codes. The way this is written, if it's not talked about in this, in this specific plan, then we revert back to the code provisions in our municipal code because there has to be that reliance. There was a EIR that was done on a much larger project area. So we've actually reduced the project area that we're including within the downtown specific plan, which isn't a bad thing. Actually, that's a good thing. That EIR was certified by this city council on March 25, 2013. And all the findings and facts and the mitigation monitoring plan are all part of that action and certainly part of this action as well. And in fact, it supports the council's ability to take action to approve the specific plan and the general plan amendments that we're suggesting. So what we might anticipate in the future is, you know, maybe a development agreement. I talked earlier about a cooperative agreement that the city has with Sun Garden Ganges that covers a number of different topics. It's my understanding that it may be advisable to convert certain points within that cooperative agreement into something that's more substantial, invested. And that's in, and they might use a development agreement as example. So that's something we might see coming down the line. And then, of course, individual project entitlements, meaning that redevelopment of a site or several sites as these applications come through. You know, we've heard a lot about the fact that the Del Rio now is on the market, that there's someone else that'll be buying it. Well, quite frankly, whomever that individual is that buys that site, once this is adopted, would have to adhere to all the policies and standards within this document, which I can tell you is much more stringent than just the general plan policies. General plan policies are good. They give us much more detail as it relates to the various types of land uses and the expectations of the community. But it's not as polished as this downtown specific plan is, and it certainly isn't as detailed. So it is, so from that perspective, it's fairly important. And I got to believe that's why the city council felt it was extremely important back in 2006 to embark on this path, to get a specific plan for the downtown core area. Obviously, there's outside agencies that'll be involved in subsequent approvals. And then, of course, we're going to be dealing with existing uses, you know, in perpetuity. I mean, because nothing changes overnight. Again, this is a regulatory document intended to survive decades. So nothing, nothing happens overnight. So we're talking about setting up, you know, road cross-sections like for Atkinson Road, which would, you know, embrace, you know, a number of different things, not only sidewalks, but also bicycle paths and, you know, landscape medians and whatnot. I mean, this is an artist's rendering of something that might happen, not something that's going to happen tomorrow because quite frankly, we don't have the funding for this. But it's a vision, and that's really the whole purpose behind the downtown plan. So we all know what Ashton looks like now. And the reality is, the vision is for something that's more beautified. And that's all this document does. It gives us a tool to work with Caltrans and/or other agencies to, you know, create something that's more desirable for the community as a whole. Typical residential streets, these street standards, the council has reviewed a couple of different times now. And this is not unlike what you've seen previously. In fact, we've embraced the street cross-sections in this specific plan to detail out, you know, a complete street opportunity, including, you know, opportunities for sidewalks. In this case, you know, a planting strip that's of sufficient width to be able to accommodate things like low-impact design standards for storm drainage, you know, obviously parking and of course, you know, narrow, narrow traffic lanes. Patterson Road, I mean, that was raised earlier, you know, what are we doing with Patterson Road? Well, the idea is to develop a plan-line concept, you know, at least from Roselle to Claus, and the idea from Claus, you know, easterly as well. But using, when we have it, you know, an 80-foot roadway cross-section that according to our general plan, gets us, gets us the four travel lanes and a center-turning lane, a walking path and a class-one bike path. Now, in some areas, as has been represented previously tonight, we don't have sufficient right-of-way to get all of these elements. So that's a decision, you know, ultimately, this council is going to be making is to, you know, what do we do in those areas where we have limited right-of-way and we have difficulties in getting all the components that we want to get within that roadway section? As it relates to the downtown specific plan, this is consistent with, you know, Patterson Road concept that we're looking at, 80-foot right-of-way. And again, that right-of-way is conveyed within this plan. And in some areas, when we don't have sufficient right-of-way, like against silicon containers, we're dealing with 75 feet. So what are we doing? We're still trying to maintain the travel lanes, the bike lane, sidewalk. We're narrowing up some of the travel lanes a little bit, doing the best we can with what we've got. Thunderbolt to terminal gets, and right-of-way gets narrower. Again, we're looking at maintaining the bike path on the north, maintain at least three lanes of travel now, not four, and then a sidewalk on the south side and then a center-turning lane. The other major issue with the downtown specific plan was to somehow to provide a level of connectivity between what could happen with the redevelopment of the cannery, the former cannery site, and its linkage with the investment that's been made in the downtown core area. The original plan concept was for an underpass under the BNSF mainline on the same alignment as Santa Fe. That underpass, as we estimate it, which is, which might be low, is estimated at about $8 million project cost. That's based on a project that was just recently finished down in the city of Merced, similar project. We think it's a very costly project and in fact, is an item that's part of the Nexus analysis and the system development fee program that your council recently approved. Because quite frankly, our circulation element shows a connection. So we had to be consistent with our general plan, the circulation element in that regard. But it's a planned concept as part of this downtown specific plan that your council needs to render a decision on. I can tell you that the planning commission appreciated the connectivity issue, but felt it might be more advisable to do some kind of pedestrian overpass. The example that we presented, which is ADA accessible, is the one in front of Enoch's High School in Modesto. Don't have to go too far. This is, you know, near corner of Roselle and Sylvan. We're all familiar with it. It doesn't necessarily have to be as elaborate as that. But it provides the same type of connectivity between the new or redevelopment of the cannery site and what we might, what we hope to promote in the downtown core area is additional businesses that might be supported by additional development, new development in the cannery area. This just happens to be another concept plan that, you know, that we saw on the web. So we pulled it up. Here's another example of pedestrian overpass, in this case, over a rail yard. So this is another real-life example of what we might be able to do. The commission, as I stated earlier, recommended for the pedestrian overpass, but made it very clear that the design specifics, they would want to have review authority over. So they, they made sure that was part of the public record. Of course, there's going to be traffic signals. All these traffic signals are part of the city's revised system development fee because they're part of the EIR for the downtown specific plan and also part of the EIR on the general plan. Financing strategies, gosh, you know, a big part of this was all developed around the ability to finance improvements with redevelopment agency. We really don't have that ability anymore. So we're using this as a tool. I know the council's got some economic incentives that staff is going to be working on to bring in certain businesses into the downtown core area. And we'll be working with the project developers to create certain things for their project, which are specific assessments to help facilitate their development or redevelopment so we can get some movement in the downtown core area. So they just talk about possible funding sources. Of course, there's always community development block grants. They're very competitive, and we've been very fruitful in applying for those. There are things called business improvement districts. I know your council has talked about it. That may or may not be brought up in the near future. But these are certainly options that are valid, tested, and been used in other, other communities. And then, of course, enterprise funds. And then, of course, development impact fees, which I've already talked about. Community facilities districts, as this council's aware, with all new development, we'll be asking for developers to enter into community facilities districts for maintenance. And that's for maintenance of landscaping and lighting, streets, and more, most importantly, storm drain these days. So that certainly will be a component of any, you know, large-scale new development project. And then, of course, any other assessment districts that the city feels is appropriate. But I've kind of pretty much explained what the, what the possible assessments might be. Then I talked about earlier modifications. And we've defined what are considered minor modifications and then major modifications and how that might take place. So again, that documentation's included in the plan as well. Planning commission did hold a meeting on the 17th. You have a copy of the minutes. In the minutes, there's some detailed concerns that were expressed by at least one individual that spoke at the public hearing. And they included, for example, one, that the downtown specific plan was not made available within the required 72-hour timeframe. Well, reality is, this downtown plan has been around a long time. The January 2015 version was available as quickly as we could. It was available on the city's website, you know, City Hall North and South. We made copies of it available, either hard copy or CDs, to all interested parties, including the planning commission, the city council. So anybody, you know, that was remotely interested in it, you know, had the ability to get the document. So it's, it's been out, and it's been out for a long time. So it's not like it's a new document by any means. Concern was raised that the general plan goals and policies prevent disruption of existing communities, but the downtown specific plan will rezone properties and modify the permitted uses as a result. The land use designations that we're suggesting, in many cases, is to roll back the density expectations to be consistent with sites' existing zoning. That's really important because it's the general plan designation that sets density. It's the zoning or the specific plan that act as the regulatory document. So that distinction needs to clearly be understood. Parking will be impacted in the downtown specific plan area. Well, you know, there's a commitment in the general plan, and I think it's even further discussed in this, in this specific plan that the city needs to do a parking inventory. And that might get a little bit messy because we may end up having to deal with some kind of a parking assignment. But we'll deal with that. It's a, it's a work project that the planning department has. And it's a commitment that was made as part of the general plan adoption. So we're not forgetting about it. We're going to work, we're going to move forward with it. Historical structures should be included, excuse me, should include residents as well and not just be discussed in the plan. Well, the historical sites that we have are those that have been given to us either by documentation by the Riverbank Historical Society or by publications that they have made available to us. We really don't have much resources to go by beyond that. So we've made every effort to include those historical sites that are known or have been documented in the body of this document as well, if they're within the plan area boundary. So that has been done, and there is reference within this document. However, it's, you know, it doesn't go, if the city council says, yeah, that's okay, John, but we still want to do something more specific as a historical site survey citywide. It's not that because we haven't done it. Historical site survey has not been done citywide. We're using the documentation that's been provided to us by the Historical Society because that's the resources that we have. The environmental impact report analyzed the cannery district, not the existing downtown area. Well, that's not entirely true. The EIR that city council ultimately certified include, included or considered the entire plan area boundary, which I've already told you was reduced in size. It included the cannery, yes, but it included a much larger area and the land uses which were considered under that plan. And don't forget, we had a, we had a big expense for the general plan that was ultimately adopted in '09 and the EIR that supported that as well. So we've had, you know, a general plan, general plan EIR. We've had an EIR for the downtown specific plan. And now we've got a more specific regulatory plan for the downtown specific. So it's been, it's been studied more than once. So at this point, the planning commission recommends that there be a pedestrian overpass, be considered as a main connection between the downtown area and the cannery district. Additionally, the PC recommends that design of the ped overpass be brought back to the PC for approval in a notice public hearing prior to construction. Actually, that's prior to approval of design, really, is what it should say. But the idea is before it's constructed, it has ample public input and review. So that's kind of our presentation on the plan. Copies of the plan are even available in the back of the room if someone wants to take a gander, you know, at that plan. There's, there's a lot of attachments in the staff report. In the staff report, you know, we have a map of the boundary. We have the sequel findings that were part of the March 11, 2013 city council action to certify the EIR. We have that resolution of the city council, 2013 015. We have the final downtown specific plan, January 2015, which has been referenced. We have the errata sheet, which I've redlined and updated, and that's dated April 13, 2015. We have the proposed general plan changes, which I've illustrated. We have signed copies of the planning commission resolutions of approval. And we have a new attachment eight resolution for this council to not only consider the general plan amendments, both land use designation, circulation, but also the adoption of the downtown specific plan. And then, item nine is a draft city council ordinance, which would consider the rezoning of the subject property, which would be the property within the boundaries, to SB three, which is specific plan three. Now, it's, it's an ordinance, just like the other items that you had before you tonight. So it's an introduction of the ordinance, which means that ordinance is now available for the people to, the public, to look at, to review, to comment on. And then it'll be brought back to the council for final adoption at some future date. That's the way that it's structured as an ordinance, just so you know that. And then, of course, the draft planning commission minutes, including the comments from Sun Garden Ganges, which were part of that public record. So I, I know I've said a lot and gone through a lot of slides here. And we've had updates in front of your council before about this project and the process. So at this point, I need to ask if there's any questions with me.
Questions of Mr. Anderson before we conduct the public hearing?
I have a concern, and that's that we were given some data this evening that I haven't really had a chance to digest totally. really had a chance to digest totally. I know this is a first reading, but personally, I could only vote for this as a first reading by going through and digesting this material and then responding to it at the second reading.
What you're allowed to do.
I mean, I understand. It's a big project. I mean, it's not, you know, there's a lot of paperwork here. It's not just a little thing. It's a big thing. Let me go back to the map. There we go.
I open this for a public hearing.
Good evening. Ramon Barmudas from Riverbank. I hear the underpass value will be about $8 million, but I didn't hear about the overpass, how much would it cost? I don't mean to be petty, but having this in 2025, maybe 10 years, 15 years from now, is beautiful. But we have, yes, two blocks here on Archeson. A place that burned up probably almost a year ago, and the mess still there. It's been affecting three businesses that are at the Carrera Riverbank, the bakery, and the Fiesta Party Place, to go and get your party things. And has been a decrease of customers. And as spokesman from them, because they are Spanish-speaking mostly on their language, but I can translate for them, would like to know how to go about it, to get some improvement made, and begin with as soon as possible, within 24 hours if possible, put a orange plastic fence that doesn't cost too much. I went to check with the...
Please remain on topic.
You know, it's on the topic, because these, these places are included, and there is no improvement of life quality in there for months. And we're going to this thing very far, but we're going to something very close that should be done now and hasn't been done for months. Thank you very much.
Is Abby, say the list? No further comment?
Where do I start on this mess? Okay, as far as the notification on this stuff, it came out in January. It's been out since January, that's true. But nobody bothered to tell the public. There was no noticing, publishing, anything. Nobody, the public didn't know it was there. So, yeah, it's been there, but nobody knew about it. The only reason I knew about it is because they sent me something, because I've been committing so many comments about it. As far as this meeting tonight, it wasn't posted until Friday, which the office is closed on Friday. Nothing was available until Monday. That's yesterday and today. And we didn't get, this other stuff you're talking about, it wasn't made available to the public either. As far as, there's a lot of changes in this new one that were not there in the old ones. A lot of changes, big changes. As far as the zoning, because my neighborhood is in, in the downtown neighborhood area, the last version of the specific plan took out the Libwork and the commercial, loft and the commercial buildings, because we're residential, always been residential. This one put it back in, with no notice to us, no chance to comment on it, no nothing, just threw it back in there, in a residential neighborhood. We didn't get a choice about being zoned, being changed, our zoning. As far as the high density, that was something that was done when the general plan was updated. It never, we, it wasn't discussed. It was supposed to have been discussed when they come into compliance with the city code, which never was done, so we're not, it can say high, high density, but we were never told about it. So now it's from R2 to medium density to whatever. It's, nobody, we don't know what's going on. Mixed use, when the, the one you just did earlier, they got a study. They got three notices, and they got a ballot. We didn't get any of that. When they did the EIR, the proposed EIR study on it, in the very early stages of the initial study, they threw out the land use element and the public facilities element. What they did look at was the Canary site, how the traffic, the Canary site would affect it. They never looked at the downtown. And I have asked several times to show me something in the downtown, in the, anything, where they looked at us, at the impact and stuff, and nobody could find anything, because they didn't do it. They didn't even do a land use element study on it. They also, if you look on the existing uses part, where they tell you that many of these existing structures, including homes, are going to be replaced to accommodate new development, existing land use that will not conform will be phased out. In other words, we have no grandfather clause. We're gone. This is not like a Bruinsville specific plan, too. This downtown is already developed. You're not doing something new. We're already developed. You're just tearing out the old ones to put something in place of it, because you don't like what's there. There's people there that you don't even bother to talk to. As far as the EIR, I think Councilmember Tucker and Mayor O'Brien was on the council at the time, and Councilmember Nigay. You got a long discussion about the hypothetical, EIR for a hypothetical plan that night, up until the time you voted on it. It was explained to you it was hypothetical, because there's no specific plan. There was a motion made and a vote made to pass the EIR. You never voted to pass the EIR for the downtown specific plan, only that EIR. So this is not passed. It's not, you, you never voted on it. As far as, as the Canary site issue, that's, that's really separate. The original plans that started out back in 2006 and '07, and when they, when they finally put us in there was because the Canary project needed extra amount of rooftops to support what their plans were. Now you don't have a Canary project, because, as I was told, throw it out, it's not good anymore. Their, their, their project is gone. The cooperative agreement they had isn't valid anymore. None of that stuff's valid anymore. Your reasons for doing the specific plan aren't valid anymore, because you don't have any agreement project with them anymore. And we don't need it. You can get downtown developed, not developed, but fixed up the way you want it, by going, using the residents and the businesses together, without telling us what we, a specific plan telling what we can, can't do, and all this other stuff, and changing our neighborhoods. And I have one other quick question for you.
You're over. Was there something additional to your input?
Yeah, I have a question for the attorney. I should ask him to begin with our conflict question.
And he'll respond at the end of the public.
It's a conflict question. Regarding, regarding the infill opportunity area, because it's a boundary, a certain area of the city is, is infill opportunity on the general plan. If somebody resides in or near that, or do they have a conflict voting on a project within that? And I apologize, I should have asked this earlier.
I can't answer that as we sit here.
So if somebody votes that might be affected by that, then?
Not necessarily. That's why I say it depends.
Can you repeat the question? I didn't hear the last part of it. Sorry.
The infill opportunity area, it's, it's in the general plan, on the general plan map, it covers a large area of, I'm not gonna lie to you, but part of the Riverbank, City Riverbank. If there are one or two councilmembers that not live within, but are, but are adjacent to that, would there be a conflict of interest, because they're within the 300 feet?
That's just too general.
One's a business, one's a home.
We can't answer that as we, as we sit here. I did review the one conflict I knew about, and we determined, as you saw, that Councilmember Bart Martinez has a conflict. I can't talk about, give a good answer on that general issue as we sit here.
So they can vote, and then you can decide?
We'll review that. We've reviewed, take all potential conflicts seriously. We can review that. We just can't do it right now.
Okay, specifically Mayor O'Brien, because the infill area goes all the way out to Oakdale and Patterson, and possibly Councilmember Campbell, because it also includes Estelle.
No, I'm not even close to that.
Eric, council, might be a good time for, I had a suggestion. Oh, I guess I'll wait till the...
Where we start a public...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Rick DiNapoli, and I'm the president and CEO of Sun Garden Ganji, the owner of the Canary site. And I know it started, this started in 2006. My involvement dates only back to 2007, when we started, when we, the Canary closed down. I just wanted to kind of, first of all, I'm here to ask that you adopt the downtown specific plan. I do have a few comments about it, but what I really kind of, what I also wanted to do was to, was to give a little bit of history of, of some of the, perhaps some of the misconceptions that, that may be floating around, and because, because I was kind of part of all of them, including the cooperation agreement, the feasibility study, and the underpass. The, the basis of the cooperation agreement was something that, that, that I, I wanted primarily with this, really the sole focus, to protect the investment that the Canary made to the water sewage treatment plant. We put over $1 million to expand that. And really, what we wanted to do was to protect in the, in the future development of that, that we would have sewage capacity. Because at that point, there's a lot of housing going on, and we were afraid that perhaps as things grew, we didn't want to get to the, we knew that our process for zoning was going to take a while, and that, and that we just wanted to make sure that we, we got the sewage that we had put up $1 million for. So that was that one thing. We did do a feasibility study at the request of the, the former city manager. It was a, again, it was in the 2007 timeframe, prior to the, to the downturn. And, and the, the underpass, to respond to your question about the cost, we don't know. I mean, I, I have no idea what it is. They said it was $8 million for the, the, the underpass. Originally, when it was proposed by the railroad, I, I was hearing 24. And, and I know just a month ago, or less than a month ago, a development came up on the FMC property in San Jose, across from the airport, where they're having a pedestrian underpass going under, going under railroads to service a large development and this new soccer stadium, and that's $13 million for just a pedestrian underpass. So, yeah, I, I think that a vehicular underpass would be probably prohibitive. My only comment about the downtown specific plan is that, well, let me just step back again. When I started it, the one thing that, that we really worked well with, with the administration, and with the primary mantra that we had was flexibility. We wanted to be flexible with, with the city and, and also vice versa. We were, as far as the EIR goes, we were prepared in 2007 to move ahead with our own planning, separate and apart, before I ever heard about a downtown specific plan. At that point, the city manager called us and said, please, don't, don't, don't start it. We want to incorporate you into it, into our downtown specific plan. And we said, okay, we'll go ahead. And that, I, as I calculated, it probably cost us about three years. The, according to the original plan, the EIR was to be completed in October 2010. I figured another year after that, 2013. So, you know, we're probably two years. So, in any minute, that's, what I want to do is, is express is, is that we, we really have worked well together, and it continued with the current administration, with Jill, who's, who's been just fantastic in moving this, this thing forward. So you're very lucky to have her. The only, the only issue I have with the, this specific plan is the planting strips, as John Anderson, I'm sure, is very familiar with. Our, our concern is not so much with the, the, the size of it, but the inflexibility of the size. In other words, the nine-foot planting strip is mandated throughout, and we just want to make sure that if we, as, as a plan comes forward, that nine feet may not be appropriate in all circumstances. And we just want to make sure that if it, if it warrants, that, you know, we don't run into a brick wall saying, no, it's got to be nine feet, because that's what we did before, that's what we adopted way back when. I, I, you know, nine feet is pretty significant, and, you know, I, with your permission, Mayor, I, I have a tape measure, and we can show you how far, you know, that, that is. You think nine feet on a piece of paper, it doesn't look like much, but when you actually put it out, it's probably, you know, out to this, the end of this, from you out to the end of this table, and you have another one that, that far, that's a log, big planting strip to have, and to mandate that throughout, I think, is, is a little bit inflexible. And so we just want to say, let us see what, what we'd like to hear is like, you tell, let us see what you have, and we'll decide if it, if it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. So with that, if there's any questions that you have of me, I'm, I'm happy to answer them, and I would request that you adopt the, the plan that's, that's, as John has said, has been a long time coming, but we're glad we're here. Thank you.
Any further public?
Ask a more through, if we pass the road to Riverbank. I have my home here on Stanslaw Street, a block from us. And I, I did meet yesterday with Clyde Campbell and Jill and John Anderson, and kind of spur of a moment thing, they called me and caught me at a time when I was busy with something else. I had no idea they wanted to have a meeting. I just knew that Clyde was, Mr. Campbell was going to be here around 1:00, but that didn't mean a lot to me. I already done what I want to do. I dropped things in the mailbox for all of you early in the morning. Anyway, we met, and I was, this, John explained some things to me that I didn't know, and what really surprised me that I didn't know was the fact that I didn't know that they wanted to change my property to a light industrial, to the LD1, LD1, I think, the lowest one you have. And it's not even, and I thought, I thought they were going to drop it to commercial, and low density or medium density or something. He explained what density meant to me yesterday, but I thought it would at least be still in a commercial zone, but no, it's going to go to low density, residential, the lowest that you have. And I had checked previously, like I explained to them, with the assessor's office, two different real estate company owners, and what was explained to me was, properties of more value are industrial, commercial, residential. And the mixed use, it, it does offer a lot of opportunities for things you can do you couldn't do if you didn't have it, I guess. That can be a pro or con for you, though. Say you lived in a, say you had a nice neighborhood, and somebody wanted to put in a, some kind of a bar there you didn't want, like a bakery bar, or something of this nature. I'm sure that would affect the value of your property, because we used to have a place called The Hive, close to this house I have now, at one time, and that really affected the value of everything on the street. It's gone now, for the old B place used to be, and now they have a, they're using it for a commercial, for some kind of repair, automotive repair or something. But anyway, what really bothered me was, I spoke with some people in town that have gotten letters, and they had the opportunity to vote yes or no if they wanted to be rezoned. Okay? And I wasn't one of those people. I've talked to several that wasn't one of those people, and most of them have some, some kind of a coating, like light industrial, and, but also going to become low intensity. And so this all concerns me, because, and I asked John that question yesterday. No, it's in my letter. I gave all, to all of you, including John, I forgot to ask him that yesterday. It's one thing I forgot to ask, because when they called me, I was across the street from here, and I just came right over. I had no papers with me or anything else, nothing like this. So... So, I, that, that concerns me. I want to know why some people get to vote that they want their property rezoned, become part of it or not. I don't see why you can't stay the zoning or in the neighborhood and still have SP3 plan. And this SP3 plan, as John was bouncing through here, I started asking, could you stop and look at that? Because I could have swore that when he was on Ashington Street, I thought I seen trees and planters in the center of Ashington Street. Did I? Bingo. That's why you want a white and Patterson. I was right in the beginning. You put that planters strip in the center of Ashington, it's going to be all the way down to Ashington, John?
Well, it's a constant.
We're not having a.
You know, you've lost, okay? You took a four-lane road, you made a two-lane out of it. Now you're going to make for sure a two-lane road out of it. I thought that's what I seen, but that answered my question. And also, I have one more thing. And I've been sitting here thinking, you know, River Cove, you have a problem. Wish you all luck in the world. You have the same problem right here in town. No one seems to care about. I'm thinking, why are these areas not being cared about? And John said, hey, what about parking later? Well, some areas of this town are close by you right here. There's things going on that the police department, everyone else can see. And it's gotten worse in the last month in just certain areas here. So, maybe when you run that property down enough, then maybe you can make parking garages out of it, huh? Thank you very much.
Is the public hearing? I close the public hearing. Bring it back. There's been some comments made. Legally, can you address any legal issues for this downtown specific plan?
I'd have to say with Ms. Halbert, we just simply disagree on some of the issues that we, we've talked about over the past couple of years. I would defer to John on the one specific issue regarding the live work designation. And while he's coming up, I've got another recommendation that Councilmember Campbell expressed concern about receiving some of the information tonight, something that some of you may, may share. What we can do, provided that you decide you want to move forward, is the ordinance takes two readings. So we could have a first reading tonight and then potentially adopt the resolutions. And I think we would, we would end up having two resolutions then at the second reading if that would be your desire. So I just want to throw that out for your consideration.
Couple of different points of clarification. One is the, the whole concept of live work in a residential environment. The, the text in the plan on page 47 talks about residential. And it says it is a permitted use and it's under classification live work. And it further defines it as a work activity should be registered as a business, which means they have to have a business license. It may include residentially compatible practices such as arts and crafts, graphic design, photography, technologic, technology, like I guess a web, website developer and/or similar activities. So that's how it's described in the text of this document as a live work under residential. Mr. DiNapoli talked about the plannings, the planting strip. The concept that we presented in the downtown specific plan, quite frankly, is consistent with what we're dealing with citywide. I urge Mr. DiNapoli and his group, and he's got some very talented planners out of Monterey working with him, to come up with a design concept that's specific to his project and then we can consider it. We're open, open-minded. The document provides for that flexibility that he talked about, but we had to start somewhere. And we started with something that's consistent with our code. And that's what's within the document. We have met with Haskell Moore. We've gone over a number of the issues that he has. There is some confusion regarding the notifications. The notifications regarding the vote that you've heard relate specifically, specifically to properties outside of the downtown specific plan area that are designated mixed use by an adopted general plan back in '09 that needed to have a zoning that's compatible with that general plan designation. So as a city initiated action, we had to first create the mixed use zone. Remember, we had to do that. And second, we had to solicit the input of the property owners that would be affected by it by some mechanism. We didn't have all these workshops like we had with the downtown specific plan. And we felt it was appropriate that we need to go direct to them. We afforded them the opportunity through a straw vote, if you will, to tell us what their feelings were. And we went through that on more than one occasion. I think there's three different, four different notifications that went to those folks. And as I've described, we've got three property owners that we're going to still work with because they want to have their general plan changed back to be consistent with their existing zoning and existing use. That's a different project and different application than what we're talking about here tonight.
But it is possible.
It is possible to.
To keep that zoning currently as it is? Or do you have to?
On those three that I talked about? Yeah. I mean, that's what we're, we're reviewing. We're reviewing those three individually. We'll be meeting with those property owners one-on-one and evaluating them. And then it began as city-initiated action to modify the general plan designation back to be consistent with zoning. There has to be compatibility between the policy document, the general plan, and the regulatory document, the zoning. So that's what we're trying to achieve. Anyway, I, I agree with Councilman's suggestion. It's a big project. It's been a lot of information. You know, I apologize, there's been some late information presented to you tonight, all of which is very important, has to be part of your decision-making process.
Are, are you talking about amendment, attachment eight? That's a 32nd read. Okay, amended read.
I'm talking about.
There's minutes from the planning commission meeting. There is a red line to rat a sheet. And then there is the letters of communication that the city clerk received before tonight's hearing.
And I've read those too. Those, we were all here at five. Got to read, the only thing I did not read until just before you started your presentation was attachment eight.
Are there any other questions of me?
I have none.
I think my questions and even regarding some of the things we received this evening were answered with your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, before we move on, one of the issues I see coming on up would be the second reading. If you have it at the next council meeting and you have, I'm out, Barbara Martinez is off, we may have an issue.
Yeah, practically speaking, if two more of you were out, then we would have to invoke the rule of necessity, which would require the drawing of straws. So we would be able to make a quorum.
Physically out.
Oh, I apologize. Okay.
I have no properties well within that. I'm even close to that. No, I'm out physically.
Physically, gotcha.
Well, no, I could come in that night.
Mayor, I, I think that in, in light of, that your wife would not be very happy with me if we had required you to come in that evening. I think you need to recover, yes. So, so I'd like the city attorney to address that. Would it be better to schedule this for the second meeting in, or the first meeting in May?
That'd be my recommendation.
Or is three votes, would three votes be sufficient if?
Three votes could, but we, just in case somebody else, something happens, I think this would be the safer course. We don't have to go back through and maybe renotice something or et cetera.
Council, the council call.
All right. It's up to you guys. I'm just laying out a possibility. I'm going to break protocol. Yes, ma'am?
I'm going to raise on something he just said, Mr. Anderson just said.
Okay. Make it brief, please. No, take your time. Do, what's the comment?
To clarify on the issue with the commercial live work in the downtown neighborhood, there was more comments than just mine before when this was going on. And it was taken out. And if you look at the last version in 2012, it was out. It was not there. The issue now is the fact that Mr. Anderson has put it back in with no comment. I've asked, we've asked, we don't know why he put it back in. If it was taken out before, no, it was no problem. We'd like to know why it has to go back in now. That's the issue.
Mayor, would you like Mr. Anderson to, to address that topic?
Live work is going on throughout the city as we know. Oh, yes, please make the comment.
Thanks, city manager. Yes, live work is going on throughout the entire city. You know, it's my understanding that, you know, that was a discussion early on. The language in the live work has been softened to recognize, you know, the residential compatibility nature of it. And quite frankly, it's fairly consistent with many of the home occupations that we're currently dealing with in a residential district citywide. So it's pretty consistent with that. So I don't really take exception to the language. I think it's consistent. And I think we've been very careful to craft it such that we're protecting those residential areas that have been indicated.
And Mayor, I will also take this opportunity to thank Mr. DiNapoli for his presence here and his working with the city throughout this process, as well as the residents who have actively participated, including Ms. Halbert, who has, has really represented her neighborhood well. We've had many meetings with Evelyn. The attorneys have met with her, myself, John individually, myself with her, talking with her on the phone. John has met with her individually as well as, as members of the attorneys. We do appreciate her interest and her desire to protect the neighborhood. I, I do want to address one comment that may not be clear for those in the audience, and that is the, the planting strip that Mr. DiNapoli mentioned is part of the ongoing effort that we've been talking about at the, at the city level and the council has been considering to meet the new stormwater requirements. These are very, very ambitious requirements that the state has set in place to manage storm drain water. And so as part of that, part of these requirements are not because the city thinks it would be wonderful. It is because the city is required to meet the state and federal mandates for stormwater management. And so this is part of that movement. But we, we certainly want to have flexibility. We, we are looking forward to seeing the, the proposal for, for any, any development in the area and, and working to have what, what will, what will work best, what will be successful.
All right, city council, we have a decision. Do we accept the first reading?
I move that we accept the first reading. An introduction by title only of the ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to accept the first reading. Back to. I have a motion to accept the first reading. A resolution of the city council of City of Riverbank approving the general plan amendment redesignating 83 parcels comprised of 18.9, 49 acres. And we also have a second.
Councilmember.
Just for, please say including attachment eight is presented.
Right, including attachment eight as well as public comment items received prior to the.
And does the council want to provide direction on how, when we have the, the second reading?
Be daring. And we have a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Hucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martin, oh, she's gone. Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Someone get Barbara Martinez, please.
Thank you, council.
Nine years in the making.
Yes.
I thought. New business, item 6.1, resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank adopting revised general fund reserve policy.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like Mayor Selah Garcia to present this item, which is part of the strategic planning objectives established in September of 2013.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As the city manager mentioned, this was part of our September 2013 strategic plan to present to you a revised general fund reserve policy. Just as a notification of some of the best practices that a lot of cities have, having a reserve established is one of those. You want to maintain adequate levels of reserve in order to mitigate any current risk that we may have, as well as future risk from revenue shortfalls and from any unanticipated expenditures, such as our 7th Street stormfall out drain. Historically, the city has established reserve levels. In April 1995, they did adopt a 15% reserve level for the general fund. And then in October of 2008, we reviewed that and revised that down to 10%. Some of the reasoning behind the reduction was because the reserve levels up to that point had never reached that 15% threshold. And so they felt that it was prudent to, to revise the policy in order to conform to what the current experience had been. Some factors that you want to consider when revising your general fund reserve is how predictable are your revenues? How volatile your expenditures may be? Any perceptions on your exposure to one-time expenditures, such as natural disasters or capital needs? The potential drain upon the general fund from other funds. As you may know, we have our community development, I mean, community center fund, which relies on the general fund to subsidize that for any fee waivers that are, that are allowed for liquidity purpose, to ensure that you have continued funds to be able to pay your bills during those times when funding comes in at different times. The city receives one-third of its revenues through property tax. Those are only received twice a year, once in December and once in May. And so we need to make sure that we have adequate reserves in order to cover our liquidity during that time. You also have other commitments and assignments that the, the general fund may be allocating funds towards. And there's also the public perception, the perception that a reserve level that's too high could cause residents to question why we're holding so much in reserves, why we aren't using those funds in order to provide them with enhanced services. So some of the highlights of what I went through as we, as I looked at our current general fund reserve and determining an appropriate level for the city, I went through a risk assessment. This risk assessment is available through the Governmental Finance Officers Association and is used through cities nationwide in order to provide a basis for, for revising your reserve. So you look at how vulnerable you are to extreme events. The city has a lot of aging infrastructure, particularly in the downtown area, as well as in the state streets, that are going to require immediate attention should there be an, an area that needs to be fixed. For example, our storm drain, our streets, we also have building maintenance that had delay, that have been delayed due to lack of funding. And there's no other financing source available to be able to cover those types of expenditures. So we do have some high vulnerability with regards to extreme events. Our revenue, revenue source stability, loss of property tax revenue would significantly affect the general fund. As I mentioned, 32% of our general fund revenues are dependent upon property taxes. During the economic downturn, our property tax, even though it lags two years behind, was still significantly affected as the property values were, were decreased. Also, the loss of a major sales tax generator could be a significant hindrance to, to the city. Currently, our top 12, 20, top 25 sales tax generators produce 80% of the city's sales tax. produce eighty percent of the city's sales tax. And you can probably imagine who those top twenty-five are. Unfortunately, I can't name them specifically because that is confidential information. But you may have a, a clear idea of who, who those are. And the loss of one of those generators would significantly affect the city. Expenditure volatility, we have medium to high vulnerability when it comes to our expenditures. Our pension costs are highly dependent on what CalPERS, how CalPERS is performing. And then our law enforcement services contract depends on the sheriff's department and the county and where they are in terms of their negotiations with their staff and their retention issues that they've had in wanting to remain competitive. And so we have to absorb those costs in order to, to continue providing those types of services. Growth risks, we have some medium to high vulnerability. We have, we will have increased demands in services from new residents that will come from any potential new developments. And sometimes those revenues could lag behind development. When a new development comes in, we have new streets to maintain, new roads. And although we will be collecting through the use of landscape and lighting districts or community facilities districts, those revenues will come in twice a year, as I mentioned, just like the property tax, in December and in May. And so we will need to make sure that we have sufficient revenues to cover us during the times should anything occur before revenues come in. And then other funds that are dependent upon the general fund. So currently, we're performing a water and sewer rate study. We know that the history of the sewer fund has been, has been showing significant deficits on an annual basis. If rates are not increased, then we'll need to look at the general fund subsidizing the sewer fund. Also deficits that are occurring in the community center fund, as I mentioned. And so based on this risk assessment, the actual target reserve level that is being proposed or that is adequate for our city is actually between twenty-five percent and thirty-one percent. That's two and a half to three times higher than our current ten percent reserve. My proposal today for you is a fifteen percent reserve. What I took into consideration to reach that number is the impact that that level would have on the size of our city. A twenty-five to thirty-one percent reserve would impact our services significantly. Nor would we be able to achieve that within the foreseeable future. The city's budgeting practices, we do continue to enforce our prudent spending practices and our budget oversight. Our budget, budget advisory committee provides some of that oversight and gives us the recommendations that we can take into consideration. Also, I looked at our borrowing capacity and the feasibility of being able to borrow funds for emergency purposes. Not quite so easy to do when you have water that's gushing out of the ground or when you have a building that may be collapsing because of any structural issues that it may have. Current commitments of the general fund. Currently, we don't have any funds that are committed towards any outside purpose. And so we don't have to worry about those commitments. And then we also have to deal with outsider perceptions. As I mentioned, having a higher level of reserve would cause our residents to question why those funds were not being used for different services. And so that's the, that's the analysis that I went through in order to determine what an appropriate level of reserve is for the city. And that was the fifteen percent. In addition to making an amendment to the, to the reserve level, I'm also making some amendments to the actual policy itself. The first being how the reserve is calculated. Currently, we, our ten percent reserve is based off of all general fund revenues. My proposed practice would be that we base our percentage of the discretionary revenues. So you might know there are revenues that come in that are one-time revenues, such as grants. And we also have revenues that come in that only directly offset salaries. For example, our transfer in the management fees, those directly offset salaries. And so my proposal is that we exclude those type of one-time revenues and those direct offsets for salaries and not include those as a basis for calculating the percentage of reserve. So our fifteen percent reserve would only be based on those revenues that the City Council has absolute discretion on and that they can allocate towards any need. The second amendment that I'm requesting.
Right there.
Yes.
In that calculation, that would be a smaller number needed to reach a higher percent.
That's correct. But this has been the, the practice. And it's not prudent to base a reserve level off of revenue sources that are not going to continue in the future. The second amendment, or actually third, being that the reserve level is the first, is the use of the reserve. Although we currently have established a sort of non-written policy that it only be used for emergency purposes, I wanted to make sure that our policy was very clear to our residents, as well as to our staff, when the reserve can be used. So currently, it's used for one-time expenditures or emergencies. There's no clear definition as to what constitutes an emergency at this point in time. But the proposed practice would be that the general fund reserve can be used for funding during economic uncertainties to mitigate any revenue shortfalls that may be occurring or for emergencies such as catastrophic losses of critical infrastructure or any state and federally declared states of emergency. The authority for allocating reserves. Currently, the City Council has absolute authority for allocating the reserves. That would continue should we be looking at the, at allocating reserves for economic uncertainties. The City Council would still have full discretion to allocate those reserves. In terms of emergencies, the proposal I'm making is that we allow the City Manager to be able to allocate reserves for emergencies that are immediate and that are life-threatening and that are for health and safety reasons. We would still need to come back to the City Council in order to have that subsequently approved. But this would allow us to be able to expend the funds immediately without requiring the two, a waiting period before we are able to bring that to council.
I would like to step in to that particular one, is that I do think we also need to add, if the council would like us to move forward with the policy changes, is to flesh out what that entails. Because I think you may recall, we had a situation where operationally we were at risk because of critical technology infrastructure. And so I, I think we need to, to clarify what might constitute an appropriate use of my authority to do that as an emergency, understanding that I would need to have, come back and have the council authorize that. This is just, so be able to look at some operational issues as well.
I also talk about in the proposed policy, an allocation of excess fund balance. And what this means is if at the end of the year, after our books have been closed and audited, if there's a structural surplus that remains over and above our target, our target reserve level, is that we would be, the City Council would be able to allocate that surplus towards future needs, whether it's offsetting future deficits, whether it's offsetting any anticipated intergovernmental impacts. You can reapportion that to future one-time expenditures or you can transfer it to other funds that have deficits or transfer it to a new capital improvement fund in order to fund necessary capital improvements that have been delayed. And another portion of the policy discusses how we would replenish those reserves, should they be used. If they're used for economic uncertainties, the replenishment plan would need to accompany the request. And so tonight, the recommendation is that the City Council consider adopting the revised general fund reserve policy and establishing a fifteen percent target reserve. And the second would be to direct staff to develop a long-term plan to achieve that proposed reserve target. I do want to provide some clarification that there may be years where the city is not able to achieve that target. And I think it's important to note that the word is target, that we're not establishing a minimum reserve level, but we're establishing a target, which is something that the city can continually work towards. We know there will be difficult years, such as fiscal year fifteen sixteen that is coming up, where our general fund reserve level will most likely fall below even our current minimum reserve required. What we hope to do is to be able to, long-term, build the reserve up to the, the target reserve. We also do have the option that you are able to maintain the current minimum ten percent reserve and then adopt some of the other language that's been included in the policy to make sure that it's consistent in its use. And I'm available for questions.
In adopting or going through the changes for your, your financial and your goals, plus adding the, the City Manager emergency powers, is that in a operating procedure? Or is that going to be in a formal document for resolution?
I'd like to have that formally presented to council so that in the future, that's been documented.
And that'll be into your operating procedure?
Correct.
And is that consistent with the strategic goals?
Yes, it is.
So you'll have it done before September?
That's correct.
Okay, so you have a, you said that the whole process would be a long-term plan to achieve it.
Correct.
And we're looking at maybe, or probably don't really know. So we're looking at maybe five-year, ten-year plan or?
I'd be looking at probably a five-year and seeing if we're able to achieve that over the next five years. That also helps to tie it in, tie it in with our financial forecast that we prepare in September for the City Council. So I think that would be an appropriate timeframe.
And then we would get updates as we go through the budget?
Correct.
And let us know how we're doing with each, each budget review?
Yes, so you'll notice part of the policy, and I'm sorry I didn't highlight that, is a quarterly review of, of where we are.
Mayor and Council, in, in light of the fifteen percent target, as, as Maricela's indicated, it is a target. The one thing that, with the policy of this, is, is also to not to unduly tie the hands of the City Council. Because you do ultimately have authority to make decisions based on information that comes available to you. And there is one concern with having a policy that is so restrictive that it prevents you from exercising discretion as new things come, come to, before you. In addition to that, the fifteen percent, while is incredibly prudent and something that I think that is, is, I would recommend looking over the long-term. I, I do need to stress long-term. We are at a position in the, is that we need to look long-term. That's something this council and, and the mayor has, has focused on financial forecasting. However, in the short term, meeting that goal could compromise our existing services at a dramatic level. And, and so I do want to make it clear for, I think for all of you understand that, but for the public as well, that to meet a fifteen percent reserve in the near term, even in the medium term, would, would, is probably unrealistic and would compromise existing services to a degree that I don't think this council would support. And so I just want to make that clear as we, we have this discussion. This is part of our, our long-term planning effort to make sure that the city is, is sound for the generation to come.
Thank you. One second, Maricela, I'm going to have a public comment. Is anyone from the public wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, I bring this back for any further discussion or action by the City Council.
And my only question would be, is so if we're moving forward with this, that doesn't change the minimum ten percent reserve policy that we currently have, correct?
If the council would like, we can include that the reserve not fall below a ten percent if you feel that that's what, the direction you would like the policy to go. And that ensures that we would consistently work towards having at least a ten percent reserve and working towards our goal of fifteen percent.
Two years ago, Ms. Anderson and I discussed that this, next year is going to be very difficult even to maintain seven percent.
That is correct.
So our expectation of a ten percent will have to be by, you know, our knowledge, under ten percent. But, but the expectation of a ten percent may be impractical in the next year.
And Mayor and Council, with that, with that in mind, I, I would actually ask that you, that we take your comments and that we revise this slightly and bring it back to you at a future time with just a little bit more information and maybe some language that again, doesn't unduly tie your hands. And so with your, if that's something that you, you think might be helpful.
As long as we bring it back as a second reading with modifications instead of the whole presentation, because we can read it.
Mayor, if, Council, if you'd like a modified brief staff report, I, I think that we can, we can accommodate you.
Okay.
You, in this particular case, it doesn't require two readings. It is just a resolution. So at least, at least, at least you won't have to go through, through that, that process.
Not that we don't mind having you explain it to us again, but...
I understand. She does such a good job with her presentations, I can't imagine why you wouldn't...
For those of you who have gone through her staff report, there's a web link there that goes specifically to your, your risk. And it's, it's very well explained. I appreciated that link there, actually.
Maybe I should have rephrased my question. Is the recommendation, is what you're looking for from us, adopting a policy that establishes a fifteen percent target reserve and no minimum reserve? Is that what you're looking for?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I believe that, to me, that is acceptable. But if we want to have new language or more clarification, and I'm fine with that because reality exists. And whatever the policy is, reality is going to dictate what we have to do. So if you want to have the complete policy and bring it back to us, I'm comfortable with that, if anyone else is comfortable with that or not comfortable with it.
I don't think I'm comfortable with it because I, I just think that it's going to be hard for, it's going to be hard for us to reach the fifteen percent, and that's number one. And I think that if people understand that we are striving to have a minimum of ten percent, it needs to be stated that way and not go away.
We're going to be disappointed.
Maybe we should try twelve percent, that might be more practical.
Well, my only additional comment would be that if we're looking at this, that the fifteen percent, it's understood that it would be way down the road.
Yes.
I want the public to be understanding of that as well.
My comments are towards the ten percent. All right, so we are now, instead of having a resolution, we're now providing direction?
Yes, and maybe what we can do is talk a little bit about what, what a long-term plan might look like. And could just kind of, you know, sort of spec that out in a, in a very broad, broad fashion. And that might give the, the councils, well as the public, a better sense of what we might have in mind and how we might achieve it over the long term.
But after the first of the fiscal year?
I, the, the desire is to bring it back before the beginning of the fiscal year, but if...
No, I'm, I'm all, I'm for it.
Yes.
But we only have one in May. Okay. All right. So let's, let's, someone make a motion of directing... So let's, let's, someone make a motion of directing. Okay, I move that we direct staff to develop the long-term plan to achieve the proposed reserve target and bring it back to us at a later date, but not after June 30th.
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion to direct staff in a second?
Can I get a clarification? I'm sorry. Where are we at with the 10% minimum or no minimum? It's not in there? Is that what you're, to go with the 15% target and no minimum?
No.
Okay, that's what you're, okay, that was your...
Well, that's what is being brought to us, the target of 15%.
The idea is to bring, essentially bring back the entire item, have you have a chance to take another look at it with, with a little bit more clarification on, on how the, how the reserve might be reached?
Got that, but Councilmember Tucker's first comment, when she asked you about having the 10% minimum in there, I heard that in there. So I wanted to make sure what we were going to vote on either had it in there or not had it in there, because that's, I heard a couple of different things, so I just wanted to clarify it.
Because if we have, if we're going to have a strict 10%, people are going home. And I think we have to dictate, be dictated by reality and how we can manage our reserves.
I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was voting on.
Motion remains, that she's bringing it back. No, no reestablishments of anything is being brought back.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
I guess yes, but I really want to see what it looks like.
We all do.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, a resolution of the City Council of City Riverbank approving the sanitary sewer system management plan, SSMP.
Mayor and members of the city council, like Mr. Michael Riddell to present an overview of this item and introduce the consultant who has been working on this plan for us and who has sat patiently through the meeting, getting a lot of information about the City of Riverbank.
More than he ever wanted to know.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This will be a short presentation on our sanitary sewer management plan. Basically, this is one of our strategic goals. This will finish this out. We have had one in place that wasn't completed. This will make us up-to-date and completed, and we will meet all of the regional board's requirements. I have with me today Mr. Neil Colwell from KSN Engineering. He is a principal with them and has, I have worked with Neil for too long to comment on, on a lot of different things. So he has always done an excellent job with that. I'll turn it over to Neil, let him present it to you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure here to take your last item and present to you a very exciting discussion on sewer system management plan. So as Michael said, we have a brief presentation. I wanted to give you just a little bit of background on the requirements that we're dealing with, go through the process that we took, working with your staff to update the documents, create some new elements to, to the document that, that you have now. And then, of course, I'll give you an opportunity to, to ask any questions. Starting off, in 2006, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted what is called waste discharge requirements. It's essentially, it's a permit that applies statewide. It's applicable to sanitary sewer systems greater than one mile in length that are owned by public agencies. This, this permit was based on, is kind of a follow-on from some, some federal requirements that EPA was developing in the late 1990s, early 2000s. The state picked that up in, in the mid-2000s to address a growing concern by the public of the potential for exposure to the public and to the environment from sanitary sewer overflows. So this whole process really focused on sewer systems and the potential, the propensity in some cases, not so much here at City Riverbank, but other agencies, for sewer overflows to continue to occur. And again, at a regulatory level, these agencies were concerned that, that public entities were not doing everything that they could to minimize those, those overflows. So within that context of the statewide permit, there's one element that, that agencies are required to undertake. It's creation of a document called the Sewer System Management Plan. We call them SSMP. And the statewide permit has very specific elements that are required to be included in that SSMP. This is the list of the elements here, and I'll go through them very briefly. First element, you need to describe your goals with a document. The goals should be focused on ultimately reducing sewer, sewer overflows. When they do occur, trying to minimize the impact of those overflows to water bodies and exposure to the public. The second element is to present your organization. So the state wants to see that you have an organizational structure, people know what they're responsible for, know what their duties are, and then know how to respond to an overflow if one occurs, know, they know who is responsible for ongoing operation and maintenance and the like. The third element is legal authority. The state wants to know that as an organization, you've, you have, you have established sufficient legal authority to appropriately manage and maintain your system. Item four is an operation and maintenance, O and M, program. Very vital element, make sure that people, that, that agencies, once you've made this investment, in many cases hundreds of, 50, 60, 80 years ago, in facilities that should last hundreds of years, that you're maintaining those facilities, repairing them, replacing them, making sure that they last and they're maintaining capacity. Element number five is to make sure that as an agency, you have a, a uniform set of design and performance provisions, so that, that you're uniformly establishing the size, the slope, the capacity, et cetera, of your sewer system, so that, again, you're minimizing the potential for sanitary sewer overflows. Element number six is an overflow emergency response plan. That's a what to do if, if an overflow occurs, who responds, who do you report to. Item number seven is fats, oils, and grease. This is one of those elements of a sewer system that are, are difficult to control. They tend to be one of the primary reasons for overflows to occur. As this stuff accumulates, it blocks the flow, and then you have an overflow. So elements, under element seven, the state is requiring agencies to look at that very specifically and develop a program and a plan to make sure that you're minimizing the potential for accumulation of fog, fats, oils, and grease. Number eight is a system evaluation, a capacity assurance plan. That's essentially a capital improvement plan, to make sure that you have a plan for improving, replacing your system as it ages. And then the last three items there, monitoring and measurement, program modifications, SSMP program amendments, communication program. Those are more elements that the state wants you to make sure that this is a living document, that you're looking at it, you're using it, you're, you're modifying it as, as needed. You're doing periodic audits on it. And then, in the end, you're communicating to your, your constituents about the, about the plan, about things that they can do, and particularly under, under the fog control program, things that businesses can do, for example, to minimize fats and oils and grease is impacting the system. So these are the requirements. Now, what we've been working with your staff on is, is to make some revisions to, to these elements. And I do, I did note here that I have an error in my slide here. The numbers should still come out to 11. This right here didn't have a paragraph return in it, so, so the numbers are, are off. Under number one, we made no change to that, or the, the goals are the same. On number two, we updated the organizational structure. You've had some structural changes since the document was prepared in, I think, 2009. We went through, under number three, went through your legal authority, make sure that, the SSMP was reflective of your current status, your ordinance. Not a lot of change there. Number four, we updated the operation and maintenance program that was in your prior document, worked very closely with staff. This is an important element, because if you have a sewer overflow and the state comes and looks and does an audit and say, well, what, what have you been doing to, to avoid that? If you have a, an implementable, realistic and implementable program for operation and maintenance, then you could look at that and say, we've been doing everything that we can and should be doing to, to minimize the potential. But when we put the O and M plan together as well, we want to make sure that it is not overly burdensome, cumbersome, resulting in additional expenses that are unnecessary. So we took a lot of time in that one to update, update that element, make sure it's very consistent with what City Riverbank needs. On the, again, the one that is, that should, should be down here, the design and performance provisions, we developed that as a new element. You've recently gone through a process to adopt city's design standards for your sewer system, so we incorporated that into the SSMP. Under the overflow emergency response plan, minor revisions there, not, not a lot to, to change. Under the fats, oils, and grease control program, that was a new element. So we put that together, worked with your staff to identify where some of the, the fog hotspots are, is what we call them, and, and put together information that can be used to educate the public on how to minimize those issues, and then work on a program to maintain, maintain the system so those, so that doesn't become a buildup issue. Under the system evaluation and capacity assurance plan, we call that a CCAP. That was a new element. And what we've done with that is we've gone through your sewer system master plan that was developed several years ago. We incorporated the capital improvements that are in your, your current sewer rate study analysis and put those and listed those as references in the, the CCAP element as a capital improvement program. And then, again, the last three elements there, the monitoring, measurement, and program modifications, we developed a new element, working with your staff, so that they could periodically go through and make sure, are we implementing as we should be? Is it effective? If it's not, let's change it, have a process so that it can truly be a living document and they can continue to, to work through, through that. Under the SSMP audit, program audits, that was another new element. So periodically, per the, the permit, you're required to go back and audit how you implemented your system. It's, seems the same as the monitoring, measurement, but there's slightly different components to it per the, the permit requirements. And then, and then lastly, the communication program, another new element that we included in this document. Also, part of what we did with, with this is we, we had addressed some recent revisions in a 2013 order that, that modified the monitoring and reporting program requirements that, that the City Riverbank has to, to follow under this, this program. This is something that your staff, on a monthly basis, has to go online and report whether there's a spill or not. If there's no spill, you're reporting that there's no spill. If there is a spill, very specific information that has to be developed and, and put, put forth publicly and through the state's website. So we addressed these, these elements and made sure that the applicable elements were updated in your, your current document. So at this point, you have, you have the draft updated SSMP, and it's being presented for your, your approval. So at this stage, when you do have major revisions, the governing board or body, city council, is required to approve the document. And then, once it's approved, it will be, your, your staff will certify to the State Water Resources Control Board that it's been approved, that it required, that meets all the requirements, and then deliver that to them electronically. This is also a document under this, these 2013 order revisions that you do, you're required to post this on your website, if the city has a website, which you do. So you'll need to take this document once it's approved and, and post to the website. So at this point, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I had a question about the fog. You say it's a new element that was developed, and I'm not familiar with it, but I was wondering, does that have new standards for businesses that they have to follow?
No, what, what we, what we did with the fog and really with all your programs, we didn't try to develop anything new. We worked with your staff to really, really implement the existing ordinance, make sure that that's incorporated into this document so, so that you had consistency. But I'll let Michael speak further.
And Neil's right. I mean, we have a fats, oil, and grease program already in place, and we also have an ordinance that covers that. So he just incorporated that element that we already have and are currently doing into the SSMP, so that we're making sure that the state regulators are seeing that we're doing everything we're supposed to.
Okay. Thank you.
I've noticed that you have, you know, a lot of specifics in the plan, such as lift stations, et cetera. Does the new system at the wastewater treatment plant, does that affect the plan? And is it incorporated prior to us accepting it?
The wastewater treatment plant is not part of the permit on the collection system. There are two separate entities.
Up to the wastewater treatment plant.
Right. The piping up to it, and then the wastewater treatment plant comes under its own WDR separate permits.
Okay, are there any other questions before I turn it over to the public?
That was mine.
This is a public meeting. Any public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council for comment and/or action.
I make a motion that we approve item 6.2 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve a resolution of the city council approving the sanitary sewer system management plan, SSMP, and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
7-1, staff comments? Comments?
Yes. Mayor and members of the city council, as you know, we had a strategic planning session on March 31st. Typically, I would have given an overview of that update for the, the public's review. However, in light of the intense agenda, I decided to postpone that to April, to the second meeting in April. In addition to that, I'd actually like Maricela Garcia to come back up and talk a little bit about the Budget Advisory Committee meeting and opening.
Just wanted to take an opportunity to invite all of our residents to our Budget Advisory Committee meeting, which will be held tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock PM here in our city council chambers, as well as to invite any members of the public who are interested in participating as part of the committee. We still have one vacancy, and applications are still being accepted.
And then I also just want to report to give Sue and her staff some kudos. We had a great event at Jacob Myers Park on the Saturday before Easter, or then, yes, so look at those, look at those pictures. And Sue, why don't you go ahead and come on up and talk us through these?
Mayor and members of the council, I can't really take credit for this one. Carrie and the staff took this on themselves. I was out of town, but they were sending me text messages and pictures as they were, as it was occurring. But it was very successful. Carrie did a great job, and the recreation staff, there was 150 signed up. I think we could have doubled that without trying. They raised $900. And everyone had a great time. My worry in the beginning, when staff asked me if they could do this, I said no at first because I thought the mess, and I thought we would get all kinds of calls. So then they talked me into it, and it cleaned up really well. So I, I think we'll do it again, probably more than once. So it was, it was awesome. They did the Easter egg hunt after, which they had 500 kids, and they were a little overwhelmed, but, and then they had all kinds of volunteers too, I think 20, over 20 volunteers, pickleball club and some others. So it all worked out, and it was a, a different, something different. We were looking for something different, so. But yeah, staff did a real good job.
Sue and Carrie, Anita, and all the volunteers that helped, and all the people that came out to support the event.
We missed you, Jill.
Thank you, yes.
I looked for you.
Maybe next year. I had company, I had company, council member.
They're invited.
Good point, Mayor.
Is that it?
Yes, that is it. That concludes staff comments.
Council authority member comments, item 7.2. Councilmember Jones Cruz, please.
I just have a couple of things. I just was very excited to see the website update tonight, and thank you all for all those efforts. It was very professional and looked awesome. Thrilled to have that ready to go. I also wanted to comment about the library. I recently downloaded an app on my phone called 3M, and it is part of the Stanislaus County Library, and you can download and borrow ebooks. And if you haven't done it, it is very cool. So since it was on our agenda tonight about the National Library Week, I would encourage you to check that out. It includes books that you could download. I think she touched a little bit, based on it had books on tape, it had music, videos, and on it. It's awesome. So if you haven't downloaded, download it and borrow books from the library electronically. Riverfest, looking forward to that on... Riverfest, looking forward to that on the 25th, and also Love Riverbank, if you haven't signed up to volunteer, please do that, will be the 18th. And the last thing I just wanted to say, I'm really proud that with all of our budget stuff that's going on, that we are taken care of and paying debt. And debt is, is tough to deal with. It's hard paying debt back. And I know we're looking at some pretty severe stuff in the next fiscal year, but I just want us to also kind of focus on what we are doing and remember that we are taking care of some, some business and, and feel pretty proud of, of the things that we're getting done with our fiscal situation. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Campbell?
I'd like to just let everyone know that the Stanislaus Civil War Association promoted a contest with the eighth graders at Cardoza School in writing essays on the Civil War. Barbara Martinez, Councilmember Barbara Martinez and I participated as judges. They presented 200, $150 awards to the students that won on last Monday night at a dinner that she and I were invited to over in Modesto at their society meeting. And I thought it was kind of neat because they could have gone to a lot of different schools, and they chose to try to go into Cardoza to do what they did, and I thought it was very good for the school. Likewise, I was at the color, color run, whatever you want to call it, and it was, was really a lot of fun. I mean, people would come and say thank you for plastering them with the color. It was really kind of neat and different. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucker?
I appreciate all of the reports and presentations that were made tonight. A lot of work goes into these reports that are made in very short amount of time up here at the podium, and just want to acknowledge everybody and appreciate everybody for all their hard work that they, that they do. We have Riverbank, in addition to all the other wonderful events that are coming up very shortly, we have Riverbank's Relay for Life with the American Cancer Society, I believe, coming up at Riverbank High School, May 2nd, I want to say. And you can sign up to donate to any of the teams that are online at the Relay for Life website, so hope you'll support Riverbank Relay for Life.
Vice Mayor?
I also want to make comment about the National Library Week. As Vicky stated, it's, our library does a lot for our community. And if you don't know, there is a contest called Love Your Library, and you can receive a grand prize as a recipient and also up to $2,000 in library software and services for your favorite, favorite library. And then Councilmember Campbell and I, we attended the California Cities, League of California Cities Policy Committee meeting in Ontario. And I want to just make mention that nextdoor.com, which is, we've already talked about, that is our virtual neighborhood watch communication. It was highly recommended and endorsed by the police chief of Fontana, and he just was saying that it was a great avenue for getting the neighborhood residents talking and being aware of what's going on in the neighborhood. So I was just glad to hear that. I went and talked to him and said, hey, we're doing that in Riverbank anyway. And so I learned a lot about the community policy and what we're doing. I'll be talking about that a little bit later, how it affects our community and, and other cities in the state. So, thank you.
Thank you. I had a chance to go see the wastewater treatment plant, the new operations, how it's proceeding, and it's very impressive. I think we did a very wise move. We had some representation from Escalon in Ripon, and they're interested. We'll see what, where the, what the future brings. One of the items that we have to really consider is stormwater. As you were down in Ontario, I had also, and environmental concerns are with stormwater and how much it is going to cost. They're looking at ways to make water, stormwater, a utility, so you can put a utility tax on it so we can meet the mandates by the state and the federal. I'm a little disappointed that we had very little coffee up here tonight. And it shall be highly reflective of the proceedings on the 16th, which is the city manager's evaluation.
Somebody's head is going to roll tomorrow.
Before I adjourn, there is one that we have to consider and to take in very seriously, and that is conserve water. With that, meetings adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.